Contemplate the tide tonight.
You mentioned some.
Good evening, Littleton, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for September 27th, 2021. We are opening this meeting at 6:00 PM to go into executive session. We will then come out of executive session at or about 6:30 PM for our regular agenda. So at this time, an entertaining motion for us to go into executive session.
I move that the Select Board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and to convene an open session thereafter.
Chair does so declare. Motion made, seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Nordhaus?
Nordhaus is aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
The Chair is aye, so it is unanimous. At this time, folks, we're going to go into executive session. We'll flip the switch back on and be live hopefully within about 25 minutes. Welcome back, Littleton, to Select Board meeting for September 27th, 2021. We just came out of executive session, and we'll open the meeting with the pledge. And I ask the clerk to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so our agenda this evening. We will have some mail, which will be presented by Mr. Ansaldi, and then we will move on to Department Board updates and requests. We've got a couple of gifts to accept, which is awesome. Department of Public Works has some contract to award and some other items. The Finance Director will be giving us presentation about ARPA and a little lesson on that. Then we'll have an opportunity for public input and member updates. The public input, again, is a 10-minute section of the meeting where you have an opportunity, if you want to be heard, just raise your hand, be recognized by the Chair, and then we just ask that you come to the microphone so that you can be heard at home, and just identify yourself and your address, and keep your comments to a two-minute limit. Next up, we'll have a joint meeting with FinCom to discuss the finance-based warrant articles for a special town meeting. The Select Board will have a discussion about the Fire Chief hiring process. We have had an ongoing discussion about Nagog Orchard, so we're discussing the potential creation of a working group. Town Administrator Assistant Town Administrator update will include the Select Board's meeting schedule moving forward, and then we have some minutes from our August 30th and September 13th meetings that we have to review and hopefully approve. And then we anticipate adjournment at 8:05. It's optimistic, but let's go for it. Any mail, Mr. Ansaldi?
We didn't, but I just wanted to mention one thing, Mr. Chair. We have the vaccine bus coming back to Littleton on Saturday. It'll be here from 9:00 to 4:00 at back at Fay Park to coincide with Park and Rec's Oktoberfest. So that's great. So we will have a press release that'll be going out. We will also be doing our social media push this week on that, and as well as most likely do another reverse 911 call, because actually that triggered a lot of the people that came last time. They mentioned that they were notified because of that. So we'll do that as well, and hopefully we can continue to boost our vaccination numbers up here in Littleton.
So when we do the members' updates, and I don't have anything, I can blame you.
Oh.
You took the Vax bus and the Oktoberfest. But that's okay.
It's always worth the talking about.
You can reinforce it. You can reinforce it.
Reinforce it.
Thank you. Let's get the word out. That's it for mail, or?
That's it.
Thank you very much. All right, so next up on the agenda, we have Department Board updates and requests. So Park, P-R-C-E, Parks Recreation and Community Education is here.
This is the first time I think I've been at a float game.
Oh, huh?
So thank you all for having us here tonight. So we are asking for acceptance of a donation from the Denise Flaherty Pagasic Scholarship Fund, and this is something Denise used to work for our department. She's been, she was a huge part of this community and, you know, is greatly missed. And so, you know, we want to be able to honor that and give back to the community and, you know, keeping the kids active. That was something really important to her. So this donation is from the Scholarship Fund for her, and yeah, I guess that's what I got.
$4,605.
$4,605. Very generous donation.
Right, and there was a fundraiser a couple of weeks ago at the Shilpa Valley Ski Area. It was a cornhole tournament at the Tiki Bar, which is where I believe the majority of the funds came from. And it was just, it was a very well-attended Littleton event. And yeah, Denise was an integral part of our community, as is Ivan. And this is definitely something that means a lot to the family. So it's great that they're paying it forward and allowing other people to participate in some of your, some of your programming through these scholarships.
Absolutely.
That's awesome. Thanks for bringing it forward, Alicia. You ready?
Has anyone ever voted against accepting one of these? I mean, I've been on the board very long, but this seems like an odd format, at least.
Not tonight, please.
Move that the Select Board vote to accept pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and in accordance with its policy on solicitation and acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purpose, an unsolicited gift from the Denise Flaherty Pagasic Scholarship Fund of $4,605 to be deposited into a special gift fund account to be used without further appropriation by the Director of Parks Recreation and Community Education towards providing scholarships to help low-income families participate in department programs.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Great. Excellent. Thank you very much, Alicia.
You're welcome. Can I give one more reminder for, I know Anthony had brought up our Oktoberfest.
Absolutely. I'm still doing it.
So just as a reminder, this Saturday, we are running our Oktoberfest. It's going to be at Fay Park. This is the second one that we've been able to run in the past. So we've had a huge attendance. It was a wonderful experience in years past. So if you're around this Saturday and you haven't, you want to get a vaccination, the Vax bus will be there. And please come out, and it's a wonderful community event. I know you think of Oktoberfest and you think of beer, but it's definitely a family event. You know, we have activities for kids, adults alike, music. It's a blast. So if you're around this weekend, please stop by and come out to the event.
The hours?
Ah, the hours are going to be, I think it's 5 until 7:30. I know, I should know off the top of my head.
It's 11, isn't it?
11. So it's 11:00 AM? Okay.
11. I think it's 11 to 5.
Long day, long day.
Yeah, I think it's 11 to 5.
11 to 5. My apologies.
No, no worries. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I would have had to pull it up in front of me.
That's okay. I feel really bad. Sorry, guys.
No, don't feel bad. Let's get it out there. All right, good deal. That's awesome.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Alicia. We do have another gift for Elder and Human Services. You want to take that, Anthony?
Yeah, I'll take it. Liz is on vacation, so she has, she received two gifts, another $735 from Ed's Weenies, which is really incredible.
A lot of hot dogs.
It's a lot of hot dogs. And that's just, yeah, that's the tips, which is really great. He's very generous. And $2,500 from the John and Eunice Morrison Charitable Foundation for outreach programming and for EHS. So those are the two donations that she's looking at the board accept.
Yeah, two entities that just keep giving. That's awesome.
True.
All right. I move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and in accordance with its policy on solicitation and acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purpose, to accept donations to the Department of Elder and Human Services, EHS, from Ed's Weenies in the amount of $735 for families in need, and the John C. Morrison and Eunice B. Morrison Charitable Foundation for Outreach and Programming in the amount of $2,500.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Let's keep rolling. Now you're going to ask, what are you asking for? No, I'm sorry. Mr. Stoddard, you're up.
$100,000.
$105. Hi, Chris Stoddard, DPW Director. You didn't even have to ask me this time. So we are here because the disposal and hauling contract that we have currently with the transfer station is expiring on the 30th, and we did purchase the new truck so we can haul our own trash. Now we just need a disposal contract. We put it out to bid. We got two contractors to bid on it, Waste Management and Republic. Waste Management was the low bidder. We've worked with them for years and years, so I'm comfortable with them. Price is reasonable. That's where I thought, where I thought we would come in at. So I'm just looking for you to authorize Anthony to sign the contract. We did, oh, sorry. We did a one-year contract with the option to renew for two additional years. One year.
With any kind of escalator, or?
The price can be negotiated at that time. So if we think it's a reasonable price, we can just renew with them. If not, then we can go back out to bid.
Okay. Geographically, where is, where would you be hauling to Waste Management versus Republic?
So Republic, everything would be going to Devens, but Republic did not actually bid on the recycling. So technically.
Be two different trips.
We would have had to rebid. Waste Management, we're hauling the trash to Fitch, or actually to Westminster. The bulky is going to Lemonster, and the recyclables are going to Billerica. So we did put in the contract that everything had to be within a 30-mile radius, so that way we weren't driving to New York.
Yeah, if you're saving a couple of grand, but you're spending a lot more in gas fuel.
Exactly.
All right, sounds good. Any questions, comments?
All right. I move that the Select Board vote to award the contract for waste disposal to Waste Management and to authorize a town administrator to sign the contract in the amount of $105,813 through June 30th, 2022.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
So the next one is authorizing us to spend $2,993.73 on paint. This is coming from a, I honestly didn't even know this fund existed. It's a per-ride assessment fund that we get from Uber and Lyft.
Uber and Lyft, right.
So it's been kind of stockpiling for the last three or four years. There's $3,600 in the account.
We get about $600-ish a year.
Especially the tax.
Like 50 bucks a month from Uber and 25 from Uber.
It's 20 cents a ride. So whoever gets picked up here, they get, we get 20 cents of it. So I just need, we're going to paint crosswalks and road markings, and I figured this was a good fund to use it in, out of, and we only need just under three grand.
Right, and that's what DPU recommends, is anything to support roads and.
Anything, Chapter 90 eligible.
Yeah. And then, right, on the Chapter 90, right.
Excellent. Any questions?
No. Move that the Select Board vote to authorize the expenditure of $2,993.73 in per-ride assessment funds for the purpose of painting crosswalks and road markings.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Great. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. All right, next up, under Department Board updates, we have our Finance Director. So Alicia's coming up. Look like Sean's going to accompany you. He's got you back. Bring him back up.
Good evening, honorable Select Board members. Tonight, we're going to go over the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA.
Awesome.
So ARPA was signed into law on March 11th, 2021, by President Biden, and it's, you know, lots of, he gave a few billion dollars to local state governments. And in order to use this money, it actually has to be accepted by the Select Board per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. You can go on to the next slide, please. It's administered by the United States Department of Treasury. We are actually a pass-through entity through the state because of our populous size. So the country, we request our money comes right in through the state. And since the county doesn't have its own entity, we've got a portion of that based on our per capita population. We can't use ARPA funds for any pension costs. We can't use ARPA funds for any debt service. We can't use ARPA funds to replenish reserves. But we can use ARPA funds for water sewer broadband. We can use it to restore services due to revenue loss. We can use it for any kind of COVID impacts. So we've been awarded $3,056,956, of which we've received $535,222.65. And from Lee County, we have gotten in, sorry, this is all far away from me, $993,255.46 as of August 20th. The funds are held in a separate interest-bearing bank account because per U.S. Treasury, that interest actually belongs to the federal fund. So we can also use that interest earned for expenses. We've put together a few options for the board to consider for funding, if it deems fit. Two-thirds, which is $2,037,971, towards sewer infrastructure capital costs. One-third, or $1,018,985 in revenue losses to restore positions and enhance resident service, or any combination that the board deems fit. And the next slide shows the 410,637 in positions that were cut due to COVID-19 in fiscal year '21. I put together a pie chart so we could kind of see where most of the costs were. Facilities Director, Highway, Large went to Police Officer, Town Clerk, Town Admin Intern, Conservation Collector, Finance Intern. And do you have any questions? And thank you for your time.
Do we have to, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is there a deadline by which we need to spend this?
Yes, it does expire. It expires, I believe, December 31st, 2023, but they have extended it to December 31st, 2026 for infrastructure projects.
Any other questions for Alicia or Sean?
Appreciate the very succinct and understandable presentation of it. Thank you.
We're just voting to accept the funds, not to disburse them in any way.
We can have, yeah, we can have a meeting another, another time if we, if we wanted to deliberate whether the dollars are spent, the level of detail.
That seems important.
Kind of. All right.
Okay.
Good deal. To echo what Paul said, you know, this is succinct and just very easy to understand, so I really appreciate it, because you hear the news all the time about ARPA funds, and a lot of people ask us, how much are we getting? And it just, it helps everybody, I think, to have a better understanding. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right.
All right, ready?
Yes.
Move that the Board vote to accept ARPA funds pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So we, and now on to public input. So if there's anybody that would like to be heard, raise your hand. Okay, seeing nobody, great. So member updates. Mr. Nordhaus?
Yeah, I have a couple things. I was able to arrange board member training for the Housing Authority, which was going to, by a DHCD attorney, which is going to happen on October 5th. I'm excited about that. And speaking of the Housing Authority, I attended a very special Eagle Scout Court of Honor at Fay Park a week ago Saturday. Troop 20's Ben Kane built the Pine Tree Park vegetable, Community Vegetable Garden. And it was a, it's a really amazing gift to that, to that authority. There are a lot of great speeches, and he got a commendation from both the Massachusetts House and Senate, and Jim Arciero and Jamie Eldridge were there. And does it surprise any of you to know that Jim Arciero was an Eagle Scout?
And I knew that.
And then, and then last Saturday, I worked on the new Tarp Town Forest Trail between Harwood and Turkey Farm. And it was a beautiful day, and that's a really beautiful section of woods. And the trail's looking great. There, there's boardwalks being built by Jim O'Neill. Amy Green organized it. It was a lovely time, even though I was just pulling roots out of the ground. But I still enjoyed myself.
Hopefully use some techno when you are done. There's plenty of poison ivy out there, that's for sure. All right, thank you. Ms. Napoli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind the public that we currently have vacancies on numerous boards appointed by the Select Board. We have vacancies on the AD Commission, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Cultural Council, the Economic Development Committee, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, the Sustainability Committee, and the Transportation Advisory Council. These vacancies and more information about these committees is posted on the town's website, www.littletonma.org. So anybody that's looking to get involved in the town and participate and give back to the community by serving on any of these boards or committees, please feel free to check out the town's website and submit your application. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glavy?
Yep, thank you. Mr. Chair, we're going to be in a moment hearing in much more detail presentation on the financial impacts of the prospective sewer project, but on a parallel track issue, topic that has been part and parcel of the whole sewer discussion for the close to 20 years it's been out there, was its feasibility of a quirk or anaerobic digester component to the sewer project. And last Thursday, former Board of Health, member, former Sewer Study Committee Chair, Bob Zimmerman, myself, the Water Department Chair, Jim Carr, and the Water Department Manager, Nick Lawler, went out to Hadley and asked a tour, an actual anaerobic digester in operation at a dairy farm in Hadley there, which is also supplemented by a stream of restaurant waste material. And if nothing else, it leads to a million more questions once you see it in operation. But it works. It's generating energy, and it's a little early to determine the applicability to our eventual project. But fortunately, the Water Department is managing the engineering design track so that one doesn't have to wait for the other, and that whatever we decide to do with the sewer project, as it's currently designed, the possibility of anaerobic digester component to it is entirely viable by the, by the technology and the design. So it's exciting to see what we might be able to accomplish in achieving that goal.
Excellent. That's it for you?
Yep.
All right, as I, as I promised earlier, the, there is an Oktoberfest this Saturday. It is at Fay Park, and Anthony did steal my thunder, but I'm going to try to give a little, little more detail than he gave. It is from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM at Fay Park. It's a free event. It's a family event. Alicia was, was singing its praises earlier. The Park and Rec and Community Education does a really nice job with these types of events, and there's going to be a lot of activities. It's going to be music. And as an added bonus, at, at the fire station will be the Vax bus. We had the Vax bus about a month ago, and it was, we actually had a lot of folks receive the vaccination at the Vax bus. The Vax bus, we parked right in front of one of the, one of the bays of the Fire Department, so you can go over and get vaccinated and have some lager. That is, again, from 11:00 to 5:00. It is a free event to get in. Vaccination's free also. What else did you steal from me? I would have been pulling them both together. The other thing is, this, this Friday night is the first home football game at Alumni Field. So the, the team has been away for three weeks, on the road for three weeks. They got a 2-1 record, and they will be home against Lunenburg at 7:00 PM on Friday night. So just an FYI, plan your whole weekend right here and stay home. And a lot of community events going on. That's it. It's a lot going on, but that comes up as we go through the agenda. So next up, we have a joint meeting with FinCom. FinCom Chair, Mr. Wilson, is here, and many members of the committee. Appreciate y'all being here. This is for us to discuss and present the financial impacts of some of the town meeting articles and.
Probably worth doing, if you don't mind me interrupting. We, we have two familiar faces since the last time we met with FinCom that have rejoined their ranks. Steve Vernoudia, retired treasurer who many moons ago was on FinCom as well, and as well, Al Rass was back there too. So everything old is new again. Welcome back.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for being here. All right, so as far as how we plan to proceed, Mr. Ansaldi, you've got a presentation, and I think Alicia's going to lead us in, right?
Yeah. Gary, you want to open your meeting?
Sure. Our meetings have opened.
Very, very formal, that, Mr. Wilson.
We have four. Six of us up.
All right. All right, good deal. Thanks, Alicia.
Thank you. Good evening again, Select Board members and all of the FinCom members. Tonight, we're going to go over the Littleton Sewer System expansion. You can click the next slide. So we'll talk about planning, designing, building, and we're going to get into the costs. So planning for this project was based on the Town of Littleton Wastewater Needs Assessment done by C.D.M. Smith in December of 2020, and LWD has conducted community meetings to receive input from the general public on the development of the recommended phasing plans, and will continue to conduct community meetings to receive input throughout the designing phase. I know, right? The proposed project is anticipated to begin construction during the summer of 2022, pending approval and funding. This is just a graph of their estimated wastewater flows. We can keep going on that. Engineering is better at explaining that. This is just a depiction of additional capacity. If we choose to expand in the future, they will have that additional capacity ready if we expand. The preliminary cost estimate breakdown, this is just for the State Revolving Fund, or SRF, loan for the 1.5%. That 39,950, the big number that everybody hears, but that's not really what the project is going to cost. So Scenario A1 is 6.5 million, and that is just if we kept the sewer as is. The next scenario is at the 13.6, and that's, I believe, if we went on to 2.42.
Yep, that's using the 2.42 site. And then the other scenarios are building off the expansion of the spine. So this is really just to show the different cost scenarios of where we were kind of last spring on this. And then the following slides kind of show where we potentially could be going with it. So.
So here are the costs. So there are lots of contingencies built into the different cost models. So what we wanted you to see is with the costs that we really think are going to happen, less grants, where we think, sorry, where we think the cost will actually be, which will be between 15 million and 19.4 million. And right now, the town's currently, you know, if we did nothing, would be between 6.5 to 13 million.
And that would be 100% town-funded as well.
Correct.
And that's for the replacement of the treatment plant for the existing facility.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, let me go on to the next slide. So if we did, if we were to borrow, we expect to borrow between the 15 to the 19, and we would repay this through the Enterprise Fund, the Sewer Fund, through Betterment Assessments and user charges. And we could see potential additional funding possibly through the state, because the state also received ARPA funding that could be used for infrastructure. So we could go and ask the state for additional funding. In addition, the federal government has some legislation that has passed the Senate and is at the House. We're hoping that passes and gives additional revenue. Most important slides are a financial evaluation of the project. So IBM, right now, was bringing in taxes part of vacancy of $1.8 million.
Maybe as a preface, can you explain what the connection is for folks who may not understand between the sewer project and the IBM project?
Yes. So right now, IBM is set to close and leave and be vacant. The land has been purchased and wants to be rezoned and rebuilt, and is within the district for sewer. So now, instead of the cost being 100% on the town, the cost would be 60, 20, 20, 60% on that new site, 20% on the town, and 20% on the users. So right now, I'm just talking about just taxes. So just as far as taxes, IBM was bringing in 1.8 million per year. We'll go to the next slide. If IBM was leaving, then we would, we would lose revenue, about $767,517 in revenue lost, and it's just being vacant with nothing there, and still 100% sewer on the town. So impact of 550 King Street vacancy and current treatment plant. So the estimated value decreased to $27,9700. The tax burden would shift to the remainder of the tax base, which is the residence. The tax revenue decrease would be 767,517. This would add 26 cents per thousand to your single tax rate, or 129 to the average residential tax bill. The current treatment plan at the high school will require placement within three to five years. The cost is the sole responsibility of the town as the only user. We estimate that between 6.5 and 13 million if we replace the system at 242 King Street. The potential rezoning of 550 King Street, the town is no longer the largest user of the system, the responsibility shifts as follows, as I said, 60% to the redevelopment of 550 King Street, 20% municipal, 20% to the other users. The 19.4 million high-end costs with the grants, the town will be responsible for 3.9 million of the system's construction cost. Next slide, please.
Yeah, and Paul, do you have a point? This is five years ago, when we were trying to create that nexus with the owner of some properties, we weren't able to make that happen. So to have potential partner now with 550 King Street, you see the impact of the financials, it's drastically different than what we were looking at five years ago.
Yeah, and I think actually, real news, even since Alicia who put this presentation together, the water commissioners voted last Wednesday, Tuesday night, to allow that property into the system on a written request from the new owner, Lapoli Company. So it's more than just a possibility, they're asking in, and they've been included in the expanded map.
They've documented it.
That part's great.
Yes. And the 60%, I think is a conservative number as well, based on all estimations.
Right. Refrain from quoting the higher number, but yeah, the higher numbers were bandied about.
Yes, we went with the conservative 60/20/20.
Great.
So this slide is showing how much the developers are actually looking to invest into the town, 175 million in Phase 1, another 80 million in Phase 2, another 125 million in Phase 3, so they're looking to put a significant amount of money into Littleton.
And if those investments are made, then we come back to Kathy's couple of slides ago.
So the potential future valuation of the mixed-use development, so the valuation based on the submitted plans is between 80 to 115 million. Very conservatively, the potential total value is 79,462,950. Your estimated total tax dollars is 1,762,200, estimated residential at 760,000, estimated commercial at 1,200,000. The lower end valuation brings the town closer to the pre-vacancy levels for both value and receipts. Estimating conservatively, including the miscellaneous commercial site, the potential value could be 115 million. Those tax dollars could be closer to 2.5 million versus 1.8 that we're getting from IBM. Estimated residential tax rate would be 1.194,750, estimated commercial at 1,303,400. This high-end valuation increased property tax receipts at the parcel by approximately 687,914 over pre-vacancy levels, and a portion of the new growth associated with this value increase could be earmarked to support the town's portion of the project, further reducing the burden on the taxpayer.
A vacant property definitely would have had effect on that tax shift from the commercial over to the residence. If it stayed vacant, then nothing there, so it's...
We saw that when very fine closed, you know, the numbers, it behooved us to have Patriot come in and to work with them to make that happen. All right.
Okay. So in conclusion, the project timing is right, it does not interfere with future sewer goals, the environmental impact of the water aquifer protection, the nitrate reduction, that would be more Nick to talk to, financial feasibility for Littleton Common Sewer, if the town passes the proposed rezoning of 550 King Street, we'd have the grant opportunities contingent on authorization, the change is split from 100% on the town to the 60/20/20 as we went over, an increase in new growth, and it may offset our increased tax revenues, an increase in building permit revenue, and borrowing will be repaid through the Betterment Assessments and user charges.
Awesome. Any comments from the select board?
I have a question.
Please.
The estimated actual cost, you had a figure of 13 to 19 as the final cost of the town, I believe?
Correct.
And that would be for the full build-out of the, I mean, the scenario with the most, scenario D, is that correct?
Yes.
The biggest one?
Including the 550 King Street, yes, and then offset by grants.
So that was my question, like, so this has an offset of both ARPA and MassWorks grant?
Correct.
Is that a, you know, is that a done deal? Like, what's the possibility of that happening?
Well, you guys just passed the acceptance of ARPA.
Yeah.
So then I recommended 2/3, but that's up to you guys on how you want to do it.
But what about the MassWorks?
The MassWorks we're going to apply for.
Okay, so that isn't, it's not certain?
That's not certain until we actually get the authorization in place, and then we apply.
We also have one and a half mil from MassWorks for sewer already, too, so...
Certainly, a MassWorks grant is much stronger this time around than last time. I think last time, we requested it based on a concept, and we had Northern Bank. This time, we actually have a new owner of 550 King Street with a plan for that combination of residential and commercial, so that would be a very attractive grant application, and it really checks a lot of the boxes off that the governor is put in for his priorities.
And regardless of what we would, the town would pay in this scenario, 20% of that, so even if we didn't get the full 6 million, it would be 20% of the 27 million minus the ARPA money if we use it, minus any grant money that we use.
Correct, but we still, that's the high end, we still, those costs actually have built-in contingencies, we don't, and I've spoken to Nick, we don't believe that those, that's going to be the actual cost.
Yeah, there was some very inflated contingencies that were, Paul and I have been attending at the meetings with the Sewer Working Group, and there's contingencies that are compounded...
By other contingencies.
By other contingencies, so it's, I think everybody's going to be very pleasantly surprised with where we end up. But to Anthony's point, with the housing component, the creation of jobs, we're checking a lot of the boxes, and economic development in a downtown area, there's a lot of components to this that very much support the awarding of MassWork grants. So, and frankly, Lapoli Companies have a pretty strong relationship with a number of agencies, and they've done this in other communities, and they've got a pretty good track record of delivering on what they said they were going to do, so it's, us going for $5 million in MassWork grants without this project was a lofty goal, and I anticipate we're going to get beyond that $5 million mark, closer to the 6, 6.5, with the inclusion of this development, but more importantly, this developer. Any other questions or comments?
No, so thank you, Mr. Chair. So I did, I'm on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, so I was looking through the Littleton Common Revitalization Roadmap, and there's been some talk on social media now that people are becoming more aware of this project, and some concerns by residents just as far as more housing, more development. And I think it's really, I know this is coming up quick, it seems, you know, we have an article coming before town meeting, but really to try to play catch-up, to educate some residents about the process and what the work that's been done to date. You know, we have the Littleton Master Plan, we have the Littleton Common Revitalization Roadmap, we have a housing production plan. So for a number of years now, you know, whoever's been sitting on this board, on the planning board, on FinCom, have really utilized resources available to us through the state to help guide Littleton as it grows. So when a project like this comes along, you know, like, we know IBM's been sitting there, it's, you know, it's on Route 2, Route 495. So back in 2012, we did participate in a study with the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development with the state, and this site in Littleton was identified as a priority development area, a PDA, specifically for economic and housing development in the Town of Littleton. So there is a reason behind us wanting to develop this area. I don't think many residents are aware to, you know, no fault of their own, or maybe as educated as we are, based on the seats that we sit in, about the importance of economic development in Littleton, from, you know, clearly a financial standpoint, but also just to help move our town forward and be able to provide the services that we need to sustain our community for many reasons. And the other component to that is the housing component, which I think is getting lost somewhat in the conversation, is being able to create workforce housing, housing for individuals who can't afford an $800,000 home, but are important to local businesses so that they have the employees that they need to sustain their businesses. So it's just important, I just want residents to realize, and we'll try to get, you know, more information out there the best we can, that this site is designated as a primary, priority development area. The town has been working on this since 2012, so I just, you know, hope that residents will do a little bit of research and take a little bit of time, and ask us questions too as well. So the Littleton Revitalization Roadmap is really a great report, and I just hope that we can look into that as we move forward with this project as far as educating the public, just because there's a lot of information in there about the economic benefit, or potential economic benefit to developing that site, and what it could really do to Littleton Common as a whole and to the town as a whole. So I just wanted to mention that.
That's great. Good point of information, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I think I would be extolling all the virtues of the projects, the alignment of the stars and all that, and I'm happy to do that, but I'm still amazed that Alicia, who hadn't even worked in this town a month ago, has grasped these two very complicated projects and put them together in a form, and I know that was a lot of data up there on the screen, but for anybody watching out in TV land, it's all available on the town's website, the Selectman site, and that, you know, those are details that you should acquaint yourself with, folks, but Alicia's ability to grasp everything, and then to turn around and give it back to us in forms that we can actually understand, I might add to you. And I know Sean and Nick were very much a part of all that as well, and other folks here.
No, absolutely, yeah, appreciate you saying that. Mr. Wilson, anybody from your board have any comments or questions?
Any questions from the board? Question, so that makes the assumption that all the commercial properties in the district are going to connect to the sewer?
All the commercial that are off this bone, yes. Nick can speak to it.
Yeah, I think we were arguing at the wrong time, so I think Alicia can stand back with my part of the presentation.
She nailed it, though.
I'm a bar shirt, and she left behind. So a couple of things, the commercial parcels are automatically opted in for legislation, they don't have a choice. That's number one. Number two, Sal, who's the owner of 550 King Street now, indicated to us he was interested in sewer and wanted to commit to us, but the Board of Commissioners last Tuesday expanded the district onto his property. So now 550 King Street doesn't have a choice either, they're opted into the project, which was, which is great, because it makes the financial feasible.
Which is why that 60%, that number went up, got it?
Yeah, and the numbers Alicia has in there, that 60/20/20 split, again, it's highly conservative. We think that 550 King Street, and of course, it has to go through a planning process, but it's closer to 65%. The town's probably closer to 5% to 10%, but we want to make sure that we were conservative in those numbers. And then the estimated build-out, if you go back to that slide that showed what else is in the common, is probably another 20%, 20/20%. So we, and Alicia, like, fostered a great job putting those numbers together, still highly conservative numbers from the town overall. 550 King Street changes everything financially.
Yeah. For the better.
For the better, yeah.
That was Steve, with Mass on, I don't know. Jimmy, I'm sorry.
Through the chair, I just want to thank Nick, and I think Sean, and I want to thank Kathy Miller, while they came and really helped with getting me the numbers that I needed to put this presentation together, so it was a team effort, and I really want to thank them.
Thanks, Alicia.
I would just wanted to add, between, so between now, here we are a month out from special town meeting, and obviously, this comes to about what do we have to look at between now and then that could change financially for the better?
Yeah.
Whereas, I mean, you know, from planning, we talked on our board a little bit about, should we vote tonight, we're going to be voting the financial war articles. Should we hold off on this? We're pretty concerned ourselves when it comes to voting early on anything, we like to get the numbers the best we can, so, you know. I'm just curious, between now and town, special town meeting, are we expecting something that could change?
Yeah, so we have the biggest piece of the treatment plant that is, cost-wise, is what's called the MBR equipment, filtration, membrane bioreactor, is what filters out the wastewater. That's estimated to be $3.5 million. We're opening proposals for that on October 7th, which, in that one slide, that piece was held out $3.5 million. We're assuming, that's what the MGS is, assuming that comes into that, but we'll have to share October 7th.
Previously, that 3.5 had those escalators, so that was part of that, you know, escalation of the cost, so clearing that out kind of that time.
I'm sure Alicia had talked about that $39 million dollar number, but all that was was applying for a state loan. That number, that should not be in the market article, that's way high. We think it's closer to 27 million, even that's a conservative number, but the $39 number, that was just for state funding. They have police details of $1.5 million, which, that's ridiculous. Yeah, we did that raw water transmission main on Spec Pond, that was about 18,000 feet, police details of about $100,000.
We're talking about 45 to 5,000 linear feet?
This was 25,000, so a little bit more. It's a little more complicated work, you know, the transmission main was no connections, so they could install it much quicker, but even if you assume it's three times more, you're 300 grand.
Right, okay.
You'll never get to $1.5 million, somehow, you know.
But that's, the engineers do that to kind of cover their own hide.
They got caught up, they estimated $700,000, and you got caught up in all those contingencies. They didn't break down.
And they compound them on each other.
Just to, just to go back to, if we did nothing, that IBM property would have to, well, probably redo their sewers coming up on its life expectancy here, on its own private.
Yeah, okay, before you get off of that, yes, I'm going to interrupt you, I have a bit of a brain. You know, I know Paul, he's been involved with us for 20 years, Paul, something like that, it started off as a biometal project, which was the right thing to do, so we moved the nitrates from that area, there were a lot of filter coppers there. That was before Zone 2 was in the common. When we started pumping Beaver Brook harder and increased our withdrawals from Beaver Brook, Zone 2 grew. The common is mostly Zone 2, 550 King Street's almost all in Zone 2. So their repermeating process of that plant is going to be difficult, but it's also going to be very harmful to Zone 2. And what this project does is it moves that ethylene, how ethylene from the wastewater and brings it to the high school, which outside of Zone 2.
Cleaned.
Cleaned.
Thank you. Right, so we talked a little bit about your presentation, if we did nothing, once again, besides that happening, obviously, they can't put in what we're discussing and what the plan is with some commercial and potentially some affordable housing in there. That couldn't happen probably under the existing, so we'd see something a lot like we see now, two big buildings probably, correct, more so, or something like that.
You brought up some distribution.
So, and then, on top of that, if we did nothing for our sewer, which we're the biggest consumers of, which is coming up on its life expectancy as well, you did mention 6 to 13 million?
Correct.
Okay, so, which is fully 100% on the taxpayer, regardless?
Correct. So that 6 million was to replace the existing plant of the high school, not the high school, and 13 was to move it, we have acquired 242 King Street, we can site the plant up against 495 away from residences, and that's about $13 million to do with there, if you get it pumped out from the high school to the plant, and that's a discharge rate, so that's... out from the high school to the plant and back to the discharge site, so that's a cost. Now, those numbers are the same numbers that CDM has, I mean, maybe they're a little inflated, but comparing apples to apples, they're paying a lot more than those on our own.
Goodness gracious.
I don't know, a year ago, it didn't seem like a blessing that IBM was going to leave, it looked like it was going to be a tragedy for us as a town, and this is amazing, this might potentially turn around in our favor, so.
A pot of gold.
Yeah, I'd say, and to follow up, and you're training a thought, Gary, it's a blessing if we choose to act. If we don't, I mean, the compounded miseries are the cost of the municipal sewer, there's the loss of revenue that was going to be absorbed in tax increases for everyone else's tax bills, all our bills, and, you know, you talked about the potential of all those two buildings being reused, maybe, but without a zoning change, and these two issues are, you know, are intimately wrapped into each other, and, you know, I don't presume what the, you know, the planning process might take, but if left alone to its current zoned purposes, the most attractive market use for that property may well be a transportation hub, you know. If you attract the trailer trucks and warehouses, that's all the rage up and down the highway scene, and, you know, that's not to be taken for granted, because, you know, we have an opportunity here to implement our master plan goals, or we can say, no, do nothing, and then watch bad things happen, and that's the real choice.
When people go in the bank and trust, we haven't even talked really much about that, but they've been kind of waiting here on some action from each other.
Right, right. Just to piggyback on what Paul said, the sewers that were working with Hudson Properties that were meeting with us and talking about what they were going to do if they came to 550 King Street, were, other than Lapoli, were all looking to put in over 100 trucking terminals. It was just going to be a distribution center with over 100 dock spaces, and then it's all tractor trailers and very low revenue, as far as a tax standpoint. Kathy's nodding, so I think I got that statement right. Mr. Menoudi?
There's another question for Nick. Between now and town meeting, are you going to have the opportunity to maybe sit down with the consultants and try and go through the numbers that they gave us a little bit more, see if there's other things that can be pulled out so that compounding doesn't...
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean, as best we can to refine and get confident in the number that we're going to present to town meeting.
Even if you start work, then call our own board, we need to sit down and have a working session with the consultants, absolutely supported by our staff.
Steve will recall, we spent about a half a day with Weston and Sampson years ago, and that was a good exercise, as much as it's miserable, it's the level of diligence that we probably should be doing this. I know you have, you're already all over these folks, but I think everybody would feel more comfortable if we all get a chance to do that kind of review with them.
Well, I rather offer before town meeting and trying to plan our town meeting, so absolutely.
Especially with the beard opening on Saturday, that's going to be a big...
All right, so we've heard from the water and sewer folks, we've heard from FinCom, Select Board, I do, Anna Houston's in the audience, I don't know if you have any comments relative to the planning board, just want to recognize, you're here, so if you had anything that you wanted to add or questions?
Well, thank you, yeah, Anna Houston, I think what I just wanted to add is that the value of this mixed-use development is really huge, again, primarily because it has components of commercial. We've all talked individually among ourselves about all the wonderful things that we'd like to have in town, and this is, again, an opportunity to do that. It also allows a large business or businesses to continue to perhaps use those buildings so that, you know, we don't get those kind of gone. Repurposing them is really important. And then the residential component, I've been talking with folks around town about housing and how the number that we need is really for the middle-income folks and something that is really quite important for us to be able to get, and so, if anybody would like to see that, it's on the planning board webpage, but I think overall, the planning board is going to be reviewing the formal application on Thursday, October 7th, and so I invite everybody here in the audience to watch that particular hearing, come here, attend the meeting. It will be hybrid, so you can also participate via Zoom. We would definitely love to hear folks' input, because we are still in the process of hearing what folks have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, appreciate your input. Any other questions, comments?
Comment, just aware that even for those of us involved, especially for the public at large, and what Cindy was referencing really, there's a lot of information, we're going to have to keep revisiting this subject pretty much weekly for the next month until town meeting, so that people hear the information enough times, get to ask all their questions from every different angle, so that everybody feels comfortable when they show up at town meeting. You know, this was a necessary information dump, but it is there, no getting around it.
And there's a lot of speculation as to what's going to happen. I mean, social media can be a great tool, but it can also be, can propagate a lot of misinformation, and so this, these boards and these meetings are where your information should be coming from, because we are in fact the folks that are talking to the developer and talking about plans, and to Hannah's point, there's opportunities for people to give their input, and this developer has expressed that, that, you know, I want to listen to the community and put in what the community is looking to add, so.
On that note, are we doing the balloon test tomorrow?
I believe we are.
So we should mention that we're flying balloons tomorrow to look at the height of the building at 550 King Street, and I'm sure some of our viewers are going to be interested in that.
What time is that in?
So at 6 o'clock, I don't know if it's a crane or a balloon, but they will be setting something up in the location.
It'd be a fire truck?
Yeah, down in the parking lot, which would display the current height when the proposed bylaw change. The planning board does have a meeting posted, as did we post, so the Select Board can go and see what that would look like. So it's great to bring that up after, if any residents wonder what's going on, and that's what is going on tomorrow night at 6:00.
Oftentimes, the developer will float a balloon, a big balloon, so you'll see what, okay, this is what 40 feet looks like, this is what 50 feet looks like, whatever it happens to be, but I heard some rumblings about a crane as well, I have enough, Mr. Mullins nodding, so, in lieu of a balloon, it sounds like there's going to be a crane, but you can still get that representation for what, you know, what the height would be. Then it's a general idea, because you don't know how deep into the topography they're going to go and that kind of thing, but, all right, that's great, so we've got to adopt article recommendations from here, and so we're pretty, pretty much, do you have a comment, Mr. Wilson?
You know, I was just going to thank, I wanted to thank Nick and Jimmy and Alicia and Sean. This wasn't, this originally, I think they were doing weekly, probably meetings internally, and then he opened it up to us and just picking members from different boards to help and assist, so weekly we've been meeting to really, I don't want to say how many times Alicia's had to edit, you know, the presentation, but because everyone's kind of brainstorming, right, coming up with new ideas, I think, I really want to thank you guys for including, not just myself, but a few other of the FinCom members, and I know this is the first time that some of them are seeing this, but we're probably going to expand that even more, like you said, going into town meetings, and we can really, you know, the more voices we hear, I think, it's only going to help.
Thank you for that.
So tonight, you're going to vote on the articles, the warrant articles? Are you going to be placing numbers into those articles for this?
So the article, the warrant is pretty much prepared, numbered.
Right.
It's numbered, so it's...
I'm talking about...
Dollar amount.
Boss, are place holders?
Yeah, no, no, the dollar amount. So Jimmy, right now, I think it says XXX, the last version that Joe, and I'm not sure, Nick, were you going to get some numbers to him?
For what we're talking about tonight and see what comes through.
Okay, because that's the opportunity to put those numbers in there.
Right, that's, we want to make sure, you know, we don't want the $39 million in there for certain.
Right, you'll see when we get to that, it's just all Xed out right now, we just, we can...
So tonight, when you make your motion, you approve the warrants, are you going to insert a number? I mean, that's what we want to know tonight. We'd like to see it in there tonight, so that...
Then I guess that comes from you, right? I mean, Alicia did, you know, highlight that slide that had the, you know, the actual real cost, I mean, it really should be coming from you folks.
Yeah, we get that slide, then we'll plug it in for the town meeting report. That's the one tomorrow.
We can give it to you right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, to me, the number should be that worst-case scenario that Alicia had identified, that 27 to whatever it was, and then I would add maybe a million dollars for any of the NGM services. The water department staff, myself, can contain, gotten the bulk of it, but we still need some sort of NGM support, soft drawing, RFI's, change order process, and stuff like that.
2742.
2742, Nick?
Yeah, will you just show it?
Yeah.
Go back to the other one, back this one.
The orange column, 27.
That's the same number.
27, yeah.
So you're saying 2842?
2842.
No, hopefully we can refine that further, between downtown meeting, but I don't think we should be higher than that number. To me, that's the worst case.
You're looking for your borrowing authority number, being, again, the worst-case scenario within a realm of reality, what you're hoping is that number, and the yellow column is a better reflection of reality, is that right, or?
I'm hoping it's the first one.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it was interesting to me that, see, the real opinion of cost was 18 million, and then when you pulled it out, it ended in 38 million, so, it was a real interest exercise to work through those numbers, it took a lot of questions to get that 18 million followed up, and what has it to do with it?
Thank you for that. So, we're good to go on to 5B?
Sure, go to the articles, and maybe I'll say what the article is, then FinCom can do their recommendation, and then Select Board can do their recommendation.
Yeah, can we tee up the finance articles so that they can...
Yeah, these are all finance articles.
The finance articles so that they can deliberate with them, and then if they, when we're all done with that stuff, they can move on?
Yes.
Everybody's welcome to stay throughout the entire meeting.
Yeah, any questions?
Can we do the final one first, please? It'll be quick.
Come late, you want to leave early?
You seen these.
So Article 1 is bills of prior year, I think we've talked about this at the last meeting, there's a list of the bills that need to be paid.
Yeah, so on this, this particular article, every town meeting article.
Well, hopefully we don't. Our goal is to not have any bills of prior year anymore.
So we're learning that.
Yeah.
So I guess I would look for a motion unless there's any discussion on that particular article from the FinCom.
Has anything changed since we last saw it, Alicia?
Oh, just we added one bill, that Pioneer Manufacturing Company for Park and Rec for 127750, that's the only one. It's because the DPW ordered on Park and Rec's behalf, so it kind of got mixed and shuffled.
So are you looking for a motion from your board?
Yeah, looking for anyone.
Who will we recommend, Article 1?
Second.
Remove the seconding, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Let's turn a motion from the Select Board.
I move that we recommend Article 1.
Support.
Support Article 1, excuse me.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Northhouse, seconded by Mr. Glavie, all those in favor, single five is saying aye.
Aye.
So we support Article 1.
So Article 2 is adjustments to the operating budget, those, the $69,969 are based on some of the hires that we needed to go beyond over budgeted, so we're looking for approval recommendations for both.
So these things are already in place?
Yes.
Yeah, so this number wasn't complete for us last time, but we knew it was going to be close to this, I think, this was, as we awaited our HR director, probably carrying over plus some other, I don't think he even changed much there. Will you have a question, or for a motion?
Motion to approve Article 2?
Support.
Support.
Motion's been made. It's been seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion, Select Board?
Single unanimous?
I move that Select Board support Article 2.
Second.
Remove the second by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, single five is saying aye.
Aye.
Support Article 2.
Article 3 is the debt exclusion stabilization fund, this allocates $150,000 from the undesignated fund balance to, let's lower the impact of the excluded debt on the tax base.
Italian for the motion? I wonder what it is.
Any questions? I have for motion.
I have a motion that the Finance Committee supports Article 3, special town meeting?
Second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, discussion?
I move that the Select Board vote to support Article 3.
Second.
Remove the second by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, single five is saying aye.
Aye.
Single unanimous, thank you.
Article 4 is appropriation of bond band excess premium. Sean will answer questions with this.
Thanks. Yeah, so I could just give a quick overview. All right, so, yeah, a lot of words up there and numbers, but essentially what we're doing is taking excess premium that we got through two ban issuances this year and distributing the net amount of those premiums to capital costs associated with the projects. So it's really more of an accounting cleanup type move, but it's part of the process we have to go through to release the $777.33, so, took me longer to type than probably I'd like, but that's essentially the purpose of it.
That's why I wanted you to get to talk. All right, looking for a motion on Article 4?
Motion to approve Article 4.
Second. And moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Discussion, deliberation?
I move that the Select Board support Article 4.
Second.
Remove second by Ms. Napoli, to support Article 4, all those in favor, single five is saying aye.
Aye.
Single unanimous, thank you.
Article 5 is the Community Preservation Committee's designation of the dollar amount that was, the state portion, that was returned to us, that's designating those and then adding one project for Boardwalk Town, Cloverdale and Town Forest Boardwalk Project of $13,500.
Yep, we've seen this article. So Mr. Champney, by the way, is our new representative on the...
CPA?
...by everybody's name.
Is it because he's not here tonight?
He volunteered.
I move that the Finance Committee supports Article 5, special town meeting?
Second.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Single unanimous?
Discussion?
We'll take the Select Board support Article 5.
Second.
Remove second by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, single five is saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Article 6 was to fund collective binding agreements, I'm not, since we have no progress on that, we, there's no recommendation to be had, there will have to be made on town meeting for both boards. So moving on.
Do you expect that article to be drawn, Anthony, or are you still hopeful?
I'm hopeful, always hopeful.
So we'll just have a meeting a half an hour before town meeting?
Exactly, and then, or be sooner, and we can only do a handout if we did reach an agreement.
Okay.
Never want to stop talking. Article 7 is the authorization to sell a parcel on Shaker Lane, which would have some deed restrictions on it, so it couldn't be buildable.
Looking for a motion to recommend Article 7?
Motion to support Article 7?
Second.
It's moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Single unanimous?
Good.
I move that the Select Board vote to support Article 7.
Second.
Remove seconded by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, great, thank you.
All right, Jimmy, this is it. Jimmy, this is it, this is your article, so you can't stay anymore. So, then the X-out numbers would be twenty-eight, four-eighty-two. That's twenty-eight million four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars would be. Twenty-eight-five.
Okay.
You guys taking action on this, or?
Yeah, after discussing a little bit with the board and getting a few head nods, um, I think we're gonna hold off at least until our October, I think, twelfth meeting. By then, hopefully, we have a little bit more information, and if not, um, we'll wait until right before town meeting to, to vote, but, um, so, I know this goes to ink tomorrow, correct?
Correct. Right, so it'll say, it'll just say pending.
Yeah, we'd like to.
And if you have a, a recommendation beforehand, we can prepare a one-page handout that we can do prior to town meeting. If not, we can announce on town meeting floor.
Thank you.
Select Board, take action?
I'm comfortable recommending it.
Yeah, I don't know that any of that information, you know, as important as it is, would change the, you know.
The better, hopefully.
Yeah, right, I mean, it isn't likely to change our position.
I think it's kind of like a not-to-exceed number now.
Right. I don't begrudge the Finance Committee their, uh.
I mean, should we change the wording to be borrow, raise, and appropriate, not, you know, not to exceed twenty-eight-five instead of some other amount?
That's what it means anyways, though. You put that dollar.
It actually does say in the summary as well.
Yeah, in the summary.
It says in the summary.
Oh, there we go.
So I'm, I'm comfortable to smooth forward with the recommendation to support.
I move that the Select Board vote to support Article Twelve?
Second.
Move seconded by Mr. Glavy, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous, thank you.
So Mr. Chet, that's it for the financial articles?
Personnel board articles?
We would just look for personnel board and Select Board.
So we could, that is a financial article.
You want to weigh in on those?
Yeah.
They have financial impact, yeah, in fact, we shouldn't presume that they might want to have.
So Article Eight is just some changes to the Personnel Board Comp and Class Plan. The first one is we just added a holiday, Juneteenth. The second one, we changed some position titles around, Assistant Treasurer, Collector, Payroll Finance Coordinator. And the third is we updated the schedules, B B one, C one, which is on-call, meeting clerk, Veterans Agent, Park and Rec employees, on-call firefighter, and some community education, part-time workers. And that was just made, uh, increase to go along with the minimum wage increases.
Personnel board on this today, I believe, right?
Personal committee voted on this already and recommended.
It's the board first.
Yeah.
So this, uh.
This is the bylaw that's.
Yep, so as far as FinCom goes, this is really the, the minimum wage article as far as we're concerned. Um, the numbers all have to move up from the low scale, and then, um, it is kind of financial, we added a holiday, July, Juneteenth.
Full public disclosure, it's my birthday, but I don't believe. I do not materially benefit from this holiday, so I won't recuse myself.
The town council said we couldn't put in Paul Glavy days.
Without any questions, look for motion to recommend Article Eight?
Motion to support Article Eight?
Second.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
I have something against June nineteenth now, but. Just kidding.
I move that the Select Board vote to support Article Eight?
Second.
Move seconded by Mr. Glavy, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oh.
Oh.
All right, it's unanimous, thank you.
Article Nine is the amendment of the personnel bylaws. We did have a meeting, we did have a meeting today, and, um, and the Personnel Board recommended supporting Article Nine.
Because we wouldn't be voting on this article as a board, so we're gonna, I'm gonna, um.
Adjourn?
Vote to, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Did you look over the rest of the warrant, make sure there's nothing else?
That would be, this trivia, I think we're good, okay.
Move the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to get on the table again, make it easier.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, so we're okay with this, the Personnel, Personnel Board votes to support it, and I trust that they did as deep a dive as they needed to, so I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, a lot of work was put into this.
Absolutely.
At the eleventh hour, I think town council wanted to make some changes that really just complicated it more, so we were back to the version that was totally fine.
Employees had already vetted, yeah.
We vetted, Personnel Committee vetted, everybody was happy with, so.
I wasn't able to, I was in traffic, so I wasn't able to Zoom today's meeting today, but pretty much everything had been ironed out.
Yeah, it has, but then it was unanimous to support it.
Good.
All right, great.
I move that the Select Board vote to support Article Nine?
Second.
Move by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Glavy, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, great, thank you. All right, where are we on to?
Article Ten, transfer of land to the Conservation Commission. Two oh four and two oh six Foster Street to conservation. I'm not sure if I have Conservation, I don't have, voted to support this, I'm assuming that the answer would be yes.
Appreciate your efforts to pull this together as quick as you did, whoever was involved, it's supposed to be a fairly late-in-the-game request, but it looked like the right thing to do. Allow Matthew to get out there and do some more boardwalk building, or weeding, or whatever it else is.
That's right.
That's what I live for.
This language has come from council, Anthony?
It has, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any problem, the only, I did have somebody raise a question relative to, um, the differentiation to town-owned land and, and, um, anything that is owned by the Conservation Commission as to whether or not individuals can hunt the land?
Only with permission.
Pardon?
With the permission.
Well, with Conservation Commission, Commission's permission? Mr. Mul.
Oh, yeah, that's, I mean, it's something familiar.
If I may, just in the bylaws, it says, um, I can't give you the number off the top of my head, but I know, being an avid hunter, it says on town conservation land, no hunting allowed.
On conservation land?
Conservation land, it doesn't make reference to any other land. So then it reverts back to state law, and state law says if it's town-owned and it's not posted, or it's not required by a bylaw, then it is huntable, so depending on the comfort level of the Select Board, I would recommend that you either require permission, or talk to council, or just let the state law stand, it's just, those are really your options.
Well, given that kind of determination, as much as I support its position, I would like to have the Conservation Commission have an opportunity to be in the room for that discussion.
Yeah, so you want to hold off on, well, we.
Are they meeting right now?
Yes, they are.
I'd be happy.
Well, it's, I mean, it speaks to how we're going, you know, I mean, we agreed to transfer the property, but if it's gonna have contingencies on it, then.
Right, but I think if we're gonna make that type of contingency, it would have to be across the board for all, all land entitled to the Conservation Commission, not just this parcel specifically.
That's already written, spoken to in bylaw, right?
Right.
It's spoken to in bylaw, if it's conservation land, it's, it's not huntable, so.
Yeah.
So, but what is, is the town forest, who has care custody control of the town forest?
You guys have it.
Right, so this is. If, if we move forward with this, and this is, we were recommending it, but I just, it literally just can't delay recently.
It's not huntable anymore.
You have to pass it the way we have it, right, it's not huntable.
Well, if we just transferred it to the town forests, the Conservation Commission is already doing the work in the town forests, wasn't that the issue we're resolving here, as I understood, is they weren't able to extend the trail system into the property because it, they didn't really have any rights to it? I mean, they don't, they don't own the town forest, and yet they're overseeing the trail maintenance or expansion, which I support.
Yeah, I do too, but, I mean, they had to come before us to get permission, when Brandon came forward to put his, his trail in, he had to get permission from us to be able to put the trail in. Nobody, nobody's asked if they could continue through this, the, the irrigate land, two oh six, two oh eight, uh, two oh four, two oh six Foster.
I'm just wondering, and this is probably a point where we need to go back to council on it, is like, can we convey it to them for purposes of doing what they need to do, and still have it be part of the town forest, which was the intention anyway?
Right. Or do we, I don't know, maybe. I mean, I would, again, we were the ones that kind of brought this forward to try to get the.
Yeah.
To expedite this process, but in expediting the process, you know, kind of, you, you don't necessarily vet out all possibilities.
Right.
It really should just be, since it does abut the town forest, it should just be an extension of the town forest, in my, my view.
If we do, you know, maybe it does, maybe a, a language change, if we do that, and it achieves the same end, allows the, uh, trail expansion as they want, well, maybe that's the solution, change the language, that would, but, I mean, I'm kind of speculating here, and it's obviously what we don't want to be doing, but I would, maybe we ought to get, uh, have council take a look at it, and invite somebody from, or invite the Conservation Commission to come in and talk with us about it, next meeting, something.
So what else?
That's the issue, to have somebody be able to hunt on that parcel, Chuck?
Well, it has to also be, how far from residential?
You have to be five hundred feet from a structure, it doesn't even have to be a habitable structure, if it's a shed, if it's a, you know, an outbuilding of any sort, you have to be minimum five hundred feet away.
But if it's gonna be for open space and passive recreation, do you want people hunting on land that people are hiking on?
It's, the ability exists for people to do that currently on some of our land.
Yeah.
I think at this point, it's kind of eleventh hour, I think we leave it, just gonna let it go.
I don't see why that's something that we can't iron out in the future.
Yeah, I, I guess.
Well, once, once the toothpaste is out of the tube, you're not getting it back in, once, once this gets handed over to ConsCom from a town meeting vote, it's not, we're not gonna tell them, well, you need to allow it to be huntable now.
No, but I think it's a conversation we can have with them.
But I must, I can't envision people hunting in the town forest anyway.
Right.
It's almost a secondary issue to me, is, is if we, if the town forest is part of our purview, and the Conservation Commission was requesting to get that land given to them, well, are we creating two different classes of land out there, when actually what makes most sense is to have it all be the, the same, if, you know, if that's just expanding the town forest, which they've already got a right to, I'm, I'm curious as to why they are already.
Well, it says construction of a parking lot to support open space and recreational purposes, so they're looking at, like, an access way, but to go where?
Which is fine.
Right.
But, I don't know.
Why, right.
It just has a couple of questions, it's, why aren't they already, um, able to do the things they want to do under the current status?
Right.
And what's the, you know, since what we're looking to do here is extend the town forest, is that, is that what we really should be doing, or should we be just, you know, maybe it is, this language is just fine, but I guess I'd feel more comfortable having council speak to that, and maybe have the conversation with the Conservation Commission directly on it.
So does, what action will we take, no action now, or do we withdraw the article and just?
No, I would say no action, I mean, we may well be like, oh, no, no, you, you know, this is, you know, council may come back with a real simple solution, the whole thing, I don't know, but, uh, without them in the room, both those parties, I, I'm not sure I would jump on a, a recommendation on it, even though I was the person who asked you to put it on here for them. I mean, I assume in the end, all this will be ironed out by town meeting and we'll have a solution.
Right.
But I, I don't want to jump to conclusions when there's a couple legitimate questions out there, either.
Joint meeting, next meeting with them, and town council?
That's my, just my suggestion, I mean, I defer to the board on that.
I'm, I'm okay with that, I, I just, I, I wish that this had come to us a little sooner, we, we just had an opportunity to ask some of these questions.
Yeah, well, don't blame them, they were expecting it probably could be held off to the fall, that was the nice thing, it looks simple enough, let's just put it on, so, whatever.
Right.
And maybe it is, you know, but let's see. And, and maybe, uh, council could be available by Zoom or whatever, you know, give them a heads up on the issue, and see whether somebody.
Yeah, let's just, you comfortable taking no action, though?
I am comfortable taking no action.
Expecting a positive resolution, that's my.
Yeah, I think, I think we will find that, I just.
Okay.
It's kind of weird to have this sliver of twenty acres being conservation land, but everything abutting it, that is the town forest, being town forest, you know, under our care custody control.
And I wasn't, that, that point was lost on me until just you brought it up.
Yeah. Thanks for your input. All right, what else we got, Anthony?
Sorry.
Article eleven?
The next one is. Article eleven, it's the zoning bylaw for five fifty King Street. I know that Myron, Ed, Joe have been working a lot with the representatives of the Leopoli companies on, on for this proposed bylaw change, and I don't know if Myron has anything to add, or?
I'm happy to, uh, Myron too, old town planner, um, I just posted today an executive summary of the bylaw, just to boil it down to, you know, the, the big issues. The information is posted to the Planning Board webpage, if people have questions, that's the place to go, or give me a call or an email. Happy to respond to any, I think Anna mentioned already that the Planning Board's public hearing on the zoning bylaw amendment will be October seventh. We're having a meeting here in this room, and Zoom as well, so it'll be a hybrid meeting to get as much input as we can. And I was very excited to be able to sit in on the meeting this evening, just to see how the conversation meshes with, with the financial discussion. It is a handful, um, thing that's going on here now, so, very excited to see.
Thanks, Myron, you probably work on this too.
A follow-up question, I mean, I'm obviously, based, no shocker, based on all of prior discussion, that I want to support this, but with the hearing coming up on the seventh, was the planning board essentially considered, we've got a draft on here, is this more or less what's expected to be presented on town meeting floor, or is the hearing expected, is, is it fair to ask you whether the planning board is on, on board with this as is, and that's the expectation, not, not, you know, not precluding the hearing process, but?
Um, yeah, there are a few details that the Planning Board members seem to have questions about, and they'll get the answers of, you know, for, at the public hearing and make those decisions, but for the most part, the structure of it, the drawing on the Form-based code part of it, uh, the different uses, well, the different, um, building heights in the different areas of it, they like those concepts.
And it's never, um, out of place to remind folks, especially since it's complicated, is, this is the zoning change that allows for the permit process, this isn't the permit process itself, so that has yet to even happen.
Yeah, very good point, and, um, one of the things that it gets, allows the town to do is to not have warehouses at that site, because if we do nothing with the zoning, if we don't adopt the new zoning, then the other proposals will all be.
The more we can say that, the folks hear it, the, the better, thank you, all right, I, I'm clearing that up, I just didn't want to offend the planning board by taking a stance on it, but the more they've had a chance to have their hearing, and some, I guess, may only concern.
Yeah, I think it's enough of a ten-thousand-foot view for us to, we can certainly wait and make a subsequent recommendation, but.
But if the planning board didn't make any changes, then we would come back to the.
We could amend our recommendation.
For new recommendation.
Okay.
I'm gonna.
Cindy, Matthew, you guys have, is that anything?
No, I think, no, yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah.
I'm okay with us supporting it.
Sure. Somebody's got to come out of the gate, all right?
Yeah.
All right, I move that the Select Board vote to support Article eleven?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Mr. Glavy, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Article thirteen is, uh, grant easement to the Littleton Electric Light Department for the new library.
Absolutely not. There's no way on earth.
Sorry, so just no one has to pile up to the building, that's, you know.
Bunch of extension courts.
Right.
Deep Lincoln red by candlelight, right?
Ruben or Lincoln Library.
Ready, um, I move that the Select Board vote to support Article thirteen?
Second.
Move by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, great, thank you.
And Article fourteen is rezoning.
We already voted on twelve, right, we did that earlier?
Yeah, we did twelve.
Yes, we did twelve, that was the sewer.
Sewer funding.
I'm sure I didn't imagine it, that's all.
Yeah, no, yeah, so Article fourteen is re- Yeah, no, yeah, so Article 14 is rezoning of 25 Robinson Road to include parcel 20 with the rest of form-based code, and Myron, the two-thirds is wrong, right, isn't, because of the housing, or is that?
No, two-thirds is correct for this one.
For this one?
No. Because housing's not required in form, in the rezoning.
Okay, all right, just wanted to double check, okay.
They're good?
Yeah.
You've been a part of this, right?
Yes.
Move that the select board vote to support Article 14.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, great, thank you. 15?
15 is road acceptance, Bluebird Way.
Mr. Stoddard's okay with it?
We still have some work to wrap up before town meeting.
They're getting very close on it.
So the planning boards have, put, asked to have the select board insert this article, but there's still work to be done, and they did tell the developer that they could take this off a town meeting if everything wasn't done, so.
So let's wait, let's wait till they
Chris hasn't weighed in because
Yeah, let's hold up.
Okay, okay, let's wait.
And Article 16, which is the home rule petition, Article 97 for the Cobb's well, the, the water commission has asked to withdraw this article, so...
Bring it back in May.
Yeah, they'll bring it back in May, so maybe a motion to
Support their decision.
Open the warrant, withdraw this article, close the warrant, and then we'll take it out.
So I move that we open the town warrant for special town meeting.
Second.
Withdraw Article 16.
We have to do it first, right?
Yeah, we've got to open it first, then withdraw it, and then close it.
Motion made to open special town meeting warrant, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I move that the select board vote to remove Article 16, home rule petition for Cobb's Pond.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Nordhaus, seconded by Ms. Napoli to remove Article 16 from our special town meeting warrant, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I move that the select board close the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Glavy, all those in favor of closing the special town meeting warrant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous, thank you.
Okay.
No caught up?
Yep, I've lost, there's one more motion now, and that would be to approve and sign the warrant.
Okay, whoops. Move that the select board vote to approve and sign the special town meeting warrant.
Mrs. Nord, moved, seconded by Mr. Glavy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, thank you.
Next article, oh, next article, next agenda item is a fire chief hiring process.
Right, so, do you want to take a lead on this, Anthony, or do you just want to have a discussion relative to the conversation, Tom, do you have anything you want to?
You know, I mean, it's, do you want me to come up?
Yeah, if you have anything to add, for sure, sure, thanks, Tom.
Just one, yeah, yeah.
So, while we're talking, well, please. Tom Clancy interim fire chief, I did, I sent a letter to the board on the 10th requesting that you begin a process to hire a new fire chief, I think it's important for the department in the town that we get the management team in place sooner rather than later, because it's, it's starting to impact the operations of the department, not having a full management team in place. So with that said, back when Chief Wodzinski gave his retirement notice, you know, there was discussion about an outside firm, or however you do it, I know, I spoke with the chief from Westford this morning, and we got, you know, he, we were talking about it, and they're presently in a deputy chief process, and he strongly recommended, above all else, have an assessment center. He relayed to me that they got three bids, and they were, you know, roughly between $6,000 to $10,000 in there, but he said that that's, you know, more than an interview with someone, it, it's an all-day event, and really gets to the heart of, you can set up scenarios for HR, ethics, all types of different scenarios that you can run the candidates through, and really, he said, it's really shown, he said, both the internal candidates he had were ready to kill him at the end of the day for doing it, but to me, that, that seems like you could almost gather how things used to be, of some people from town that might want to serve on a committee, but ultimately you send them to an ass, the candidates that they pick, you send to an assessment center, as opposed to the expenditure of money to bring in an outside firm and learn, you, you could probably get enough people interested in town from either the community various boards, to go through the pool of candidates, and then work with someone to get an assessment center, so that way you could post the job, get your list of candidates, and while that's all going on, figure out who's going to do your assessment, and the fire chief in Westwood was more than willing to share who, who they had, the things that, that's what I think would be best, especially now that Michelle's on board, because she's a, she'll be a great asset in this, I'm sure she's, from her experience in Winchester, she's experienced, or she's had experience with hiring chief officers of some sort, whether it's police, fire, however that works. She's not here to say, no, I never have, so.
See what happens when it all show up?
Yes, that's exactly why, you got to get here, you never know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just to build on Mr. Clancy's comments, so having participated in the police chief hiring process, where there was an assessment center, I can fully support the comments that he made here tonight in support of, of having the candidates go through that exercise, it was very helpful during the police chief hiring process to utilize that resource, and I, I would strongly support doing that for this hiring as well.
I agree with you, I've been through a few different hiring processes, where we either have or have not had an assessment center, I think, that was, that was a lot of the same feedback, where people are ready to kill the, the committee, but, but you do kind of get a much better read than six, or eight, or 10, or 20 interview questions that someone can frankly prepare for and give you all the right answers, but when you're, when you're tasked with reacting, you're really getting somebody in their natural state. I think you get a better read on them.
The assessment center, of course, doesn't preclude what we may or may not do in terms of a hiring interview committee
Right.
Whatever, you can still take whatever tact we decide to on that.
And we could support whatever the board wants to do, whether, you know, you want an outside firm to kind of coordinate the whole thing, you could do that, if you want us to do it, like we did the police chief, we coordinated, you appointed the committee, we worked with the committee and gave them all the resumes, and they went through them, and, you know, we set up the assessment center, and we coordinated it through staff, so we could do it either way, whatever the board feels comfortable with, now that Michelle's here, and still, well, we still have Jen, who's a great asset in, in hiring, she was really integral part of building a team so far, so it's the pleasure of the board.
Yeah, well, I for one, I can envision myself supporting a lot of different options, but I want to make sure that the folks, the fire professionals we have, top, you know, management and, you know, the department as a whole is comfortable with the direction we take, so I welcome input as to that part of it, too.
I do have one comment before we kind of get into the reads, but did you have anything?
No, I'm in favor of an assessment center as well.
One question I would have Tom of you, because this, this process is going to take some time, so, in being respectful of you and you coming forward to us, and it's got to be, I respect you a lot for, for putting yourself out there, for doing it since Scott's left, and for, you know, carrying the torch and doing it alone, frankly, in, in the interest of not burning you out, do you feel as though we should go through a process of trying to find somebody to go in as the interim now and allow you to slip back to deputy, or you think, you think you're, you're okay with?
I think I'm okay, yeah, I don't, that's entirely up to you, but no, I don't think so, I mean, I, I just find that, well, as I said in my letter, you know, I just, it just doesn't match my skill set, but I think I, you know, I've managed to run the department, it's just, I, I can go back to our meetings in June, when I said to Cindy, you know, if this is going to go until January, then I'm going, if I'm by myself until January, I'm in trouble, but I think with the, with putting a process forward is going to improve morale.
Okay.
I think, because now, it's, it's, they're all, you know, I get asked everywhere I go, so what, what are they doing, you know, or what's going on, and it's like, so I think having a direction will continue to enable me to continue to manage the department.
Okay.
I have plenty of support from surrounding chiefs, so that, that's been a big help.
Okay.
But that, if 550 King Street was coming online this fall, I, I wouldn't be here, I'd be somewhere else, you know, because that's, that's exciting, but a lot of work, but I think as it stands right now, that we can get the process going.
Okay.
And, because I think, I strongly believe that you'll find, there'll be a strong pool of cand, I think there'll be a strong pool of candidates that want to apply to come here.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's my...
I just wanted to make sure that you were okay.
No, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So, that was one of my concerns, but I, I do, to echo what Tom said, I do think we, we do have some talented individuals here in town, many of us have been through search and selection committees, and I think we can go through with Michelle and with, even with, with Jen, she's, she's certainly helped us navigate through a bunch of hires over the last several months, I think we can handle the search portion of it locally, you know, without having to go out to some sort of a consultant, my personal feeling, but I do feel strongly that we, we should look at getting some bids for assessment centers, taking Joe's recommendation from Westford, Steel McCurdy's here, he's, he's been through a couple of selection committee processes in his own town, Groton as well as
Right here.
And some other communities, pardon?
And right here.
And right here as well, yeah, so we, we do have resources available to us, and I think that we, we can take some recommendations from, whether it be the Westford chief, or, you know, other surrounding community chiefs, if, if it would...
I was just, do we have a bylaw that speaks to the hiring process for the fire chief?
Not like the TA.
Okay. Like the composition of the committee or anything?
No, we, we set that.
Okay.
If, I don't want to put him on the spot, but Steel is here, if, would you be willing to, I know you've been through a couple of searches, I don't know if you...
I'll come up to the front, so I'm not looking around, Tom.
Is it the glare?
It is the glare.
Actually, Steel, if you got to come up, you might just have to go on mic 13 even better.
Oh, boy. All right, Steel McCurdy, Crane Road, also the fire chief in Groton, so I've been through quite a few hiring process, kind of on both sides of the table, so we've done police chief interview process, or police chief hiring process in Groton, participated in Pepper when they hired their new fire chief, one of the co-chairs for AIR when they hired their fire chief, and kind of to speak about the assessment center, it's an absolute, such a great opportunity to kind of peel back the layers of the onion, figure out who that person really is, it's a very long day, I've been through four or five, on, again, both sides of...
Are there like different entities out there for us to pick from to do a assessment center?
Oh, sure.
Okay, or is it like, somebody dominates it, and that's the folks you go to?
No, so there's, there's quite a few companies around, some are smaller, some are nationwide companies, they'll fly in people from California to do it, I mean, there's, there's quite a few options out there, and no one is better than the other, it's really about the fit of that group with the hiring committee, the board, whoever it may be, so that's an important piece to it, because you're able to work with them in order to decide, hey, these are the critical skills that we need for Littleton, right, dealing with high-rise buildings, not necessarily a huge issue here, so all the challenges that, that go along with that, we don't need to include those in, in any sort of process, of course, but things to do with, you know, changing community, changing demographics of the community, they're able to really dig into that stuff.
Okay.
So, the process, the processes that I've been involved in, there've been kind of the full gamut, from internal processes to the nationwide searches, if you will, but I'll tell you that nationwide's really New England, very rarely do you get somebody from another part of the country that really has the credentials to, to come in, so, but the different processes normally starts with a interview, of course, maybe some sort of interview of, of surrounding fire chiefs, or fire chiefs around the state, and then the last piece being the assessment center, right, because you're obviously going to invest some money in that assessment center, so you don't want to cast such a wide net that you cost yourself out of, out of your, your process, so to speak, so, that's my general 10,000-foot view of it, certainly have a lot of other thoughts, but you could probably spend six hours, and I don't think you want to be here till tomorrow morning.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thanks, Tom.
We might call you on that later, you know, if we get into the main of this.
So I guess, if we're all kind of in agreement of doing some sort of a search committee, or search and selection committee, made up of, you know, some members of this board, I think you had mentioned Michelle Viber being a part of that.
I know Select Manox, not here, he's just interested, and I'd be happy to see him as a part of it.
I agree with you, I agree with you, so I guess we need to determine what the makeup of such a committee would be, you know, so in the past, Cindy, you were talking about the bylaw, and it stated, I think, for instance, with the town administrative processes, with two select members, two members of the select board, FINCOM personnel...
You mean police chief? That was the one I was
Yeah.
Part of, yeah, it was, it was school, select board, um...
FINCOM.
FINCOM.
Just no?
Persons.
No?
Uh-uh. Keep in mind, there's a distinction between the TA spoken to and bylaw, and the, you know, what, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but yeah, I'm thinking about the police chief.
There were a couple of citizens at large.
There were.
There were, yeah.
Certainly dig that information up, but I'm sorry, I was on, because of vacation, I could have had that prepared for this meeting.
I mean, I could be hoping a lot of...
Do we need to decide on the composition tonight?
No, we don't, it just, it's, this is a discussion, but
I think if that's the direction.
With a respect for Tom, I, I think that, as soon as we, as soon as we can get a process moving forward, I think...
Right, so I think if we decide tonight that's the direction we want to go, is forming a search committee, utilizing an assessment center, you know, services of someone to provide a assessment center, we can decide on that tonight, you know, talk to Michelle, talk to Jennifer or whoever, and just figure out the actual composition of that.
I wouldn't mind designating, if there, or at least eliciting interest, I know, we know Select Manox is interested, see if there's other interests in the board, I would, you know, um...
I'm not interested.
What's that?
I'm not. No, I'm just saying, I'm like...
Yeah, I'm always interested in
Chuck and I were just involved with the building inspector hiring process, and I know, um...
I haven't done in a while, but I could certainly give it up, oh, Matthew, you've been involved one, yep.
No, I could do it, I would, I would be interested in doing it, but, I, in general, I agree with, with Cindy, like, we should move forward with that as our assumption, I think, in our, like, outline.
Right, and for the next meeting...
And get started on deciding the actual composition, and looking at assessment centers, and deciding on the process.
Okay.
I'm assuming that Michelle could help us with the details of the search, and, you know, the timeline.
She might have some input, yeah.
Yeah, and if, if either of you wanted, go, Tom.
So, I mean, Mr. Chair, it's, so your job description's done, so I mean, you can post the job while you're developing your team and doing everything else, and I'm not, I'm not...
No, 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 I, I agree with you, I agree with you.
You can put a 30-day posting for the, for the chief position and get applicants in while you're
While constructing, yeah.
And through Michelle.
Would you recommend a 30-day, or an open-ended thing, at this point, as we get our act together, what's, what's the harm in?
So maybe you do kind of have some options there, and I'll defer to you, Anthony, on doing an open-ended one, and saying that, you know, a certain amount of time, we'll kind of take a, a look and see what happens there, I've done that before, where you say, all right, there's no set due date, but in the first two weeks, we're going to take a look and see if we have quality candidates in that timeframe, you know, it could be you go 21, 30 days... You know, it could be, you go 21, 30 days, whatever the case may be.
I'm just saying, you can always end, but it's awkward if you have to reopen it when 20 people have already submitted their resumes and, you know.
A date is always good because it really sets that deadline. Because most of the resumes that we get in are actually that last week. You know, and if you leave it open-ended, you know, it's like, oh, I'll put in for it, I'll put in for it. Well, you know, you haven't seen anything, I'll still put in for it and at least it makes people decide, I think, you know.
That's fine, just wanted to question out there.
Is there, um-
30 days is the standard, that's the post-time in, in the MMA's website.
Could you put, uh, I can't remember if I've read anything that said 30 days or until-
We could put applications accepted till the position is filled and we can still have an end date for that, so.
We're requesting the applications by X date, remain open until filled, or something like that.
Yeah, something along those lines.
Yeah, I just don't want to get the, the pressure on while, you know, whatever committee we're appointing is getting their act together, trying to- First, cause they're going to have to start taking a look at all these assessment centers and meanwhile, you know, the stack of resumes comes in, what if it sits there?
Right, we, we posted, I think for the police chief, I'm sorry, Chuck.
Okay, I, I was just-
I was going to say for the police chief, I, Cindy, you were on it, we posted, we had a, you know, we got the applications, then the board had to decide who was going to be on the committee, so, you know, you, you can easily, that, that's a month like that.
But I think Michelle could vet resumes while they're coming in, too. And not, you know, I think that the committee, as long as the number is reasonable, the committee should see all the resumes.
Right.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
But I think Michelle can vet them and, you know, but she's, she's a professional, that's what she does.
Well, so what we did with the police chief hiring was, we had the job description, we had the job posting, which I understand and just remember are two different things, the wording in those. And that was something that the group had to review, they approved, they signed off on it, that went. Then the resumes started coming in and we just, we broke them down into groups and just reviewed them. It, it took some time.
Yeah, I think you all did it individually, too, right? Wasn't it, weren't they all kept separate so that you had to-
You chatted them in a folder, yeah, we did that. It, it was a time-consuming process.
Yeah.
Maybe even before we get off the ground with filling out the committee, designate a couple of selectmen, with Anthony, with Tom, and, um, with, um, what's her name?
Michelle.
Michelle, and just kind of figure out timelines and look at, look at the stuff that already exists. You know, the job description, the work from the police, hiring process, all that stuff. And, and then come back with the timeline and a recommended makeup for the committee.
Right, I think you need to really have Michelle in the conversation.
So, why don't we do this, why don't, I, I think Joe sent that, that message out saying that he, he really would like to be part of the selection committee, but in his absence, Matthew and I can, Matthew was, probably an heir apparent, he, he much to have this, but at least for this, um, organizational stage, Matthew and I can kind of carry the water right now and then we can make a more formal designation of who's on the selection committee when we figure out what the makeup of the selection committee is.
Fine with me.
Does that work?
Fine with me.
Okay, so, you know, I can just touch base and then, you know, I can-
And work with Michelle on that.
We could set up a meeting and then we'll, we'll-
Yeah, and just-
Yeah, and if we can extract some information from you guys on, you know, you mentioned that Joe had, uh, an assessment center that he liked and you've, you've worked with a couple of different ones, I'm assuming. So, if we can extract that information, I, I mean, as a citizen at large, I might be-
Any chance you might want to shorten your commute?
Well, I appreciate that, no, we're pretty happy we're already on. I already tried.
Okay, yeah, so let's do that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we'll start off- So, we will do some citizens at large and maybe there's like a, there might be a fire chief in town that we could potentially ask to be one of those citizens at large, potentially.
It doesn't always have to be in town, too. In the past, we had, uh, oh, um, Mac McGregor, Mac, and God rest his soul, he was terrific and early-
Like Steel said, that could be a secondary commit, a secondary-
Ed Davis.
Good to do.
Yeah, and having someone from the outside, the building, that whole hiring process is helpful, so.
Alright.
Okay.
You want to get together on that?
Sounds good.
Alright.
Alright.
Thanks, Bill, for all your input, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you both. Have we, next up on the agenda is the creation of the Banglock Hill Orchard Working Group.
I just got to follow.
Much aware, any further along this week than we were last week on, on this working group, unfortunately. You were away, so we didn't, we-
I was away and my time stood still a little bit.
Connect tomorrow.
You know, subcommittee is whatever.
So, we, we were looking into the construction and Diane Corry did put together, um, what the, um, makeup of that working group, I'll say was, or is. Um, there are two vacant positions from AgCom, Will Pickard is still technically a member from AgCom. Andrew Samaco is the ConsCom representative and Paul and Cindy from, um, select board.
I believe ConsCom voted on members tonight, so that may not be accurate. It was on their, it was on their agenda to vote for the AgCom working, or Agland's working group membership from ConsCom. It was on their agenda for tonight, sorry.
Okay.
That presumes that's the structure we're gonna, I mean, as much as we're on there in name, we've never met and the reason ConsCom is on there is because outside of the orchard, orchard operation, it involves, uh, quite a lot of conservation land that's contiguous to it, but, uh-
And I think one of the reasons was also because if we do face a situation where we, one of the farmers and one of the families decides to no longer farm, we wanted to have some input from ConsCom to-
Right.
To give us some advice and some, some insight into, um, how we might roll that into our conservation land.
So, we were, well, we were talking last meeting about the composition of the group, cause we didn't want it to be too big.
Yeah, we were looking at five.
So, I, I, I want to speak to that when you're, but I don't want to interrupt you, go ahead.
So, so if you're looking at, you know, two select board members, we talked about having a citizens-at-large member. So, that's three, right there.
More or less told AgCom not, not inappropriately, they'd, they'd have at least a couple of folks on there.
Yeah, and so, and that, so that's, that was five right there, so how many did ConsCom appoint? Do we know, or?
Two, I believe. Well, I don't know, actually, but they had two on before.
On the working group?
On the, isn't it?
According to the town clerk, yeah.
Yeah.
The only one that was named was Andrew, but this, this doesn't, this has a very specific-
This is specific for the orchard, so the composition of the existing, this is like a scaled-down version of the existing-
Well, we talked about it being a subcommittee or-
Yeah, the working group, right. Um, okay, so, why don't we just start new? What, what, what do we want for the composition of this, of this subgroup specific to the orchard? We want a member from-
I think two from here, two from AgCom, and then whether it's an at-large member or, um, a ConsCom member or, um, another farmer that's not necessarily from town, but is not on AgCom. You had some comments where you wanted to see what's-
I have a different, I have a different take on this. I, I mean, I think I expressed last meeting a little, a little concern about it being small. I think it should be honestly a joint select board, AgCom meeting. I think that there's a, definitely a quorum of members on this board who feel passionate about this. Uh, I would be surprised if that wasn't the case with AgCom as well. Um, furthermore, with all due respect to Mr. Mitchell, who, you know, that, he, he, I understand the reason that he wanted to keep it small, but I don't think that the issues that, you know, that the lease process has had in the past had anything to do with the size of the group, frankly. I think it had to do with the composition or, or other things. So, the, the problems of the orchard, um, are because of, we have, you know, not been responsible for it for years and it, I think it's a big mistake to rush into something, um, now, something, especially something this important, um, just because we feel like we need to hurry. It's a process that needs really careful consideration.
So, I, so, and I appreciate where you're coming from on that, Matthew. I look at it, if you, when you get a large group together, and I've been on committees like that, where it's too many people. You can't get a quorum, people don't show up, it just gets to be too, um, ineffective.
It's tough to be productive.
It's tough to be productive. And I've just, and I've experienced that, I mean, if, so if we do three, three members of the select board, we do three members of AgCom, you know, we bring in two members from conservation, it's like, you know, I mean, as a select board representative, you're there under the presumption that you're representing the select board. Um, so I, I know what you're saying and I, I don't think that we're rushing into anything, but I think it requires our immediate attention, um, is the way I thought we were approaching it, um, so.
Well, don't jump it on the size of the committee, uh, piece of it yet. Let's remember what the, the charge here is, it's just to go out and study what, what's our current status, what the market options are. Um, gather information and bring it back to this board. So, it's not like, you know, whoever we're launching is going to be running the orchard. Well, no, all they're going to be, all we, if, you know, if I'm involved, or us, whoever, whoever's involved, would be doing is gathering information, doing some reconnaissance and bringing back some recommendations. So, I mean, you know, and hopefully sooner rather than later, uh, and that's probably achievable quicker with a smaller group. I get that, but it could also be done with, you know, I don't know, seven, you could be on seven, it's tough. Fives might be more efficient, but now, you know, it's awkward because now people have expressed legitimate interest in being involved, I get that. Uh, I don't think, I'm not married to that other committee, I mean, even though I'm in there in name, we never met. It was, I mean, it, it never happened, you know, it was a point and that was it. And then some of the spots weren't even filled until whatever, just recently.
Was that because you couldn't get a quorum or?
No, I mean, issues that came up, I mean, the issues, the real issues that came up in the interim, uh, or in the past couple of years, were on redoing the lease and getting that out there. And then we did have direct interaction with the AgCom, uh, you know, Mr. Mitchell, you know, his statements notwithstanding before, things that they wanted, we put into, they were incorporated in the new lease. The problem was our, our hopes for the existing entity morphing into a, you know, a new entity kind of fell apart with the management on site, but I mean, whatever, I don't think, again, I don't think that, that whole issue with the size of the committee had anything to do with it. There was, nobody ever, there was never any impetus to meet, to do anything.
So, I guess I'm saying, you know, it's in, it's in our care, custody and control. We should be responsible and invite other people to join us.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to that.
Again, like, if it's not, if it's not an issue of size, like, we clearly have, all of us have expressed this passion for like making this work and having it happen. I don't know what the rest of those committees are, are doing. I, like, you know, like, they may or may not be as invested in this process as we are, but we are definitely invested in this process.
Right.
So, I guess I would suggest we are the core of it and if there are other people who want to be part of that process, they are welcome to join, but, but I don't want to get into a situation where it's exclusive and I don't want to get into a situation where, like, we have to dither around and try to find a quorum and, and then we can never meet, because this is obviously pressing.
Right, we definitely need a specific mission and I think we need a specific timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
The deliverable we're looking for from this group and the timeframe we're expecting it. Cause otherwise, this could just go on and on and on for weeks and months.
And it can't, because it's, it's a, it's a far-
Anticipating, getting something out over the winter for people to respond to so that we have something new in place in the spring. That's our goal.
So, that's, that's if we were going to do a lease.
Or whatever.
But we could, we could potentially hire contract.
Oh, sure. Oh, nothing precludes us-
And I think that's what the impetus was.
Not doing those things along the way, either, as information comes in, but yeah. Uh, I don't know, and maybe this is like a 60-day committee to do, you know, analysis, gather input from the community, the site assessment, taking all the experts, I mean, the stuff that we were doing, you know, with folks coming out to see. There's, there's no lack of interest and help from the orcharding and farming community to come over and tell you what you got and what you can do, what you can't do.
Right, right, and maybe one of those recommendations that comes back from the group is to, you know, get somebody from the outside or?
I, I do think we should hire someone and have them deliver a written report with a, with a, a specific deadline on what the state of it is and specific recommendations on what we need to do. Because none of us at this point have any idea, like, of the real state of things and, and we, I mean, I know that you've spoken to people, but we need an objective opinion.
Right, right, yeah, and, and in fact, some of the farmers were offering names or their own services. So, if we form our committee, they can retrace all those steps, you know, assist, get the list of names of people and, yeah, I'm fine, hire outside orchardists.
This, this can also stay, I'm not sure if this is where you were going with this, but this can also stay under the care, custody, control of the five of us.
Yes.
And we can meet to discuss, you know-
We frankly don't have the authority to give that away, that, that is what it is, so this is an advisory committee.
That's correct, that's correct, it's 100% advisory, but-
I mean, could we, uh-
So, yeah, so to Matthew's point, is that what we want to do? Like, us take, this group take that action right now?
That's what I want to do.
To hire an expert, get the orchard assessed, find out the condition of it, what, what mediation steps?
Wouldn't this group help the process of analyzing, I mean, say, hire an orchid, okay, well, someone has to put together that list of what orchidists are out there, do some vetting of those folks and come back with, alright, well, we, we got names of seven different folks that might perform this service, we asked around, we come back, you know, these three are positive, blah, 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 you know. Somebody has to do that exercise, so this, you know, that could be like job number one for that committee.
Right, like, I just want to make sure that there's specific instruction, cause otherwise, it's just going to be this conversation going on. It's not going to go forward anymore.
And I think if we need specific input from ConsCom or AgCom about the lease or details of the lease or, or protection of the watershed or anything that's in their domain, we will invite them to have input on it and we will listen to them and implement it if it's, if it's necessary. But I do think that, you know, I, I don't know, you, I've said my piece.
No, I don't, I think we're all in agreement on that point.
Yeah, and I think the five of us can continue to drive this and we can open up the invitation to, to AgCom and have, or whoever, if, if they want to make it a joint meeting and be here jointly to discuss.
Then who goes and works on the deliverables in the interim? You know, like, like what we're just talking about, who's going to go out and, you know, gather those names or make, have us, who's-
So, I've, I've got a bunch of those names just from meeting a bunch of people.
That's fine, but there's five of us and we all need to-
Do we need to go through a special process for that, Anthony? To solicit someone to come in and assess the orchard?
Depends on what that dollar amount would be.
Scope of work in the dollar amount?
You know, I don't even, I can't even begin to-
I mean, I just don't want to be coming back, you know, that makes me, it's like, hey, I hear this guy's good, okay, you know, I mean, it's going to be more of a-
What, what about like, you know, go to UMass Extension, like, Foster?
Well, that's, that's one of several orchids, and I mentioned a name, I didn't hear anybody, there was used to be a guy who lived in Littleton, right on Foster Street, Bob Luzai, who was, worked at the, uh, the extension program out of UMasses and, uh, I knew him, but I think he's probably retired from there now, but I could track him down and, I mean, he would know those folks. But that's some of the people we had up there.
What about the one we already, then we, we already had somebody out looking at it from the other orchard?
Uh, yeah, oh, yeah, the, the people from Fairview, uh, yeah, the O'Neills from Fairview Orchards were there, uh-
Those orchids.
And then they mentioned a fellow up in Berlin, too, um, who wasn't, uh, like, I think, uh, Scott Matheson they talked to.
He's more of a landscape, he does a lot of the pruning and-
Right.
So, I mean, and just, you know, talking offline to certain members of AgCom, uh, or former members, it's like you really need somebody that knows an orchard. It's been the, the one solid piece of advice I've gotten. You need an orchidist and there are fruit orchard, uh, orchidists, um, apple orchidists, just to be really, they know an orchard.
Yeah, of course.
You have to be really-
That's what we have had out there, we've had a number of those people out there, but it's, it's not, it's been to try to-
But to Paul's point, so we all come back with a name, so how do we decide who to use?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, uh, Matthew hit the nail on the head, we all have an interest in it, so I don't, none of us want to get too far away.
I'm just afraid of us going around in circles without any structure.
This, this group isn't going to, uh, do it absent somebody else offline, some subset of this group, working group, as we have it up there. We're going to point something, I think, to go out and do that exercise, gathering the names, Chuck Cad, other, you know, all the other people we had and come back to this board and say, here, we've looked at all those, all our options and at least for step number one, here it is.
Yeah, I guess I think that we should hire somebody who isn't a potential, you know, tenant on the land. I don't, I think that, that would be the first thing and I, I think someone from UMass, like, who is, uh, I don't know whether they're an academic or, or, you know, someone who knows orchards, but there has to be someone who has a lot of experience, um, that we could hire to, to look into it. But, but not someone who necessarily has a vested interest in telling us something that we, that they want, right?
That might serve a family or down the road.
I'll, I agree to all those points, because what entity is going to go out and call those names? Is it going to be this board, just tell staff, or are we going to appoint a couple of us with some other folks to do that exercise?
Right.
Who wants to do it?
I mean, oh, I mean, I'd like to be participating in it and whoever's sitting at the table with me, fine, I don't care who it is. You know, in AgCom, shouldn't, if we're going to do that sort of thing, they should have a seat at the table. Some folks who, citizens at large, I'm definitely think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Cause I think some folks from the outside are looking and saying, well, alright, you, you two entities are all wrapped up in it, but what about the, not that the rest of the world's showing interest in it, and that's fine, it's a legitimate, important town apps, uh, asset. Good to have some fresh eyes.
I'm willing, I'm happy to do it, I'll put my money where my mouth is, and spend, and take the, you know, bring back a proposal for someone to come and do it, to come in, like, and, and do a report on the orchard.
Well, I think that...
Unless someone else, if someone else wants to, to take that, I'm happy to, I'm happy to...
Well, I think we need to get the working group to do that, right? Isn't that what we just, instead of having one of us do it, have the group...
Oh, I thought we were saying that the select board was gonna maintain control.
Oh, we, we do, I mean, any decision, this is gonna be a tight leash, you just, everybody's so interested, Joe's not here, he's interested too, so whatever, whoever we end up appointing here, is it gonna get too far afield?
No, we can, I mean, we can drive the bus to Matthew's point, but we'd be crazy to go out and solicit someone to come in to look at the orchard and not involve AgCom in that conversation. I mean, that just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, yeah, of course, but right now, we're trying to get the, the names, you know, just who, you know, who should we be talking to?
Why, I mean, AgCom can look at the report, why do they need input on who comes out here?
Because they're, it's our agricultural commission, they're the ones that have the expertise and the connections with that whole world. You know, I, I just, you know...
A lot of, I mean, walking through that orchid with Will Pickett and Scott Matheson, there's stuff we would have never thought of, you know, some, a lot of it negative, but other things positive, you know?
Right.
The observations, again, it was from, you know, this particular one was from Mr. O'Neill, one of the O'Neills is like, you know, we run an orchid, why in the world do you have this many trees here? He says, you know, we, we scaled ours back a few years ago, and, you know, and then I raised a whole dialogue, you know, Chuck and I being amateurs there, it's like, well, you know, but you don't have to get rid of it all, if it's important for your view, you can, so, I mean, and I'm not trying to endorse any end view, but just being there with folks who, that's their life, they, they kind of get it.
Yeah.
And we, we have that AgCom commission, so I certainly want them to be a part of all this, they should be.
But, but to, but Cindy, to your point, like, that none of them are orchidists. I mean, I understand that they're on AgCom, but they, they, none of them have an orchid and have a specific experience with running an orchid. We need someone who, we need to hire someone who has...
No, I know, but it's just...
They're the first ones that would tell you to get an orchidist.
No, I know, but Matthew, in that decision process, we as a select board shouldn't go out and be looking for those, that entity to come in to assess the orchard without involving AgCom in that conversation. I mean, they're the ones, they know orchidists, they know people, that we just don't have exposure to, and...
They shouldn't be our only source of information, but why, you know, why, why not solicit their input?
Yeah, exactly, and so my, and this is gonna lead me to the next point, is what exactly were you looking for these people to do? Like, we need to come up with that whole scope of, can't just call somebody and say, hey, can you come check out our orchid? You want everybody to come out and look at the same things, like, give them some specific guidance.
What's it gonna take, what's it gonna cost, you know, what needs to be changed, what's salvageable, you know?
So...
A status report on what we've got there?
Yeah, I think there's a lot...
And then also a market analysis of what you reasonably could expect to do here.
I think we could come up with a, a pretty robust list of, of, of issues that we wanted answers to, pretty easily. Because, because ultimately, we're trying to find someone, we're trying to find whether it's viable or not for someone to take over this orchid and succeed, you know, at rehabbing it, I believe.
Um, okay, so let's, so what do...
Well, why don't we start with a couple of members of this board, a couple of members of AgCom, a member of the ConsCom, just so they don't feel shut out, and then, and then recruit two citizens at large.
All right.
So we can, a group of seven, to do these things, to go out and identify all the orchidist options, bring it back to this board, and say, here's your list of orchidist options, we've looked them over, we've, we were given the following names from various sources, UMass, you know, people in the retail business, whatever, and pick one, or what we hear is you probably ought to go with this one, I don't know.
So say that again, so two members of AgCom or two members of ConsCom?
No, it's two members of AgCom, one of ConsCom, because really, the ConsCom piece of this, I mean, I don't, I don't want to upset them by shutting them out, but this, you know, their land really is in jeopardy here, the, the ConsCom land on the orchid, on the Morrison property, it's not really, what's the issue, you know?
Right. So that's seven people. Two select board, one ConsCom, two AgCom, two citizens at large.
Well, it's just to get us off the dime, I, I don't know what the hell, I could live with something different, but we gotta, we gotta decide on something.
We're, we're just, we're just deciding on who to, who to hire, is that what we're talking about?
The composition of the working group, so what will...
No, no, yeah, right.
The sub-working group.
But the charge, the immediate charge...
The charge of them is to, the charge of that group is to...
Their first charge is to...
Is to, is to get, is to gather information about the orchid, to get a report on the orchid.
Yeah, and with, well, maybe step one of that, subset one is identifying professional help options to come in and do the analysis of the orchid.
Right.
Right.
Based on specific parameters set up by the working group.
Point the committee, and hopefully they can do that piece of it, come back within a couple of weeks and say, you know, here's your, here's your options. And then continue on, you know, on whatever kind of fact-finding analysis, working with whoever, whatever orchidist we hire, you know, and then maybe have a two to three-month lifespan doing the bigger exercise.
Yeah, exactly, okay, so, that sounds, that sounds perfect.
We have to establish a plan by February.
Yeah.
To do something in February and April.
Pretty quickly.
Because springing has to start in April.
Yeah, we, we may find on a parallel track that there's triage, that, you know, things we have to do even before we settle on the long-term option.
There might be options.
Right.
Okay, so let's start with this board, who on this board wants to be on the sub-working group?
Everybody?
Right, I think that's the case.
Well, I mean, honestly, so I'm not gonna die on the hill for this, it's like, the more we sit here and arm wrestle over it, the more time things aren't getting...
I'd like to be on, I'm not gonna be picking the fire chief, so I'll go pick an orchidist.
You know, and so let's think about that, too, because we have two other big things coming up, right? There's gonna be the fire chief hiring process, there's this committee, so, um...
I know, the, the, soon this stuff's gonna get real busy, too, because I'm just trying to, that's why I didn't jump with the fire.
Right, so let's think about that for a second, too, if members of this board want to be involved in the fire chief hiring process, which, believe me from experience, is gonna be very time consuming.
So, so then I'll abstain from this and just rely on the board meetings that we have to, to, you know, give my input on, on the orchid process.
Okay.
I, I, I'd like to be involved, but I'd also like to make this commitment, knowing, I mean, I don't have a tenure, everybody on this board has, you know, some issues come up, it's like, okay, I'm mildly interested, but you take the lead in that report, but I think, I think we should expect some sort of update, pretty much weekly.
Yeah.
At every one of our meetings from, you know, the board member designees and...
Let's do this, up to this point, it's been you and I, why don't we just keep it at that right now? Joe's not here to, to ask otherwise, so let's keep it at that for now? You're not gonna die on the hill, you're, you're saying you'll stand down for now, and let's just make sure that we, we have...
Well, I was involved in it, but it was Paul and I.
Totally caught up with the last...
Yeah, but you're talking about the orchid. Yeah, I know, I just don't want to cut Joe out, but if Joe wants to be involved in the fire chief hiring process, I just, yeah.
Right.
I just don't want to speak for him when he's not here. I want to make sure he's involved in something, because I know he wants something, so...
He's most interested involved, but he did ask the, he left in writing a request on the fire chief part, right?
Okay.
So just for now, I mean, we can amend it?
Yeah, yeah, totally fine, and just end it, yeah. That's fine, and so now...
We're gonna adopt that, that structure or some structure like that?
Yeah, so that's what we need a motion, yeah, two select board members, two AgCom members, one ConsCom, two citizens at large.
What do we want the citizens at large to...
Well, that's the whole thing, then we have to appoint them.
Then we have to, we have to put that out there.
We have to publish that, we have to appoint them.
And we, and we can't, honestly, we gotta get, stack it with some of the leg...
So this is the creation, this is the creation of a separate working group from AgCom working group?
Yeah.
It's the Nagog Orchard Working Group.
Yes.
So we have to make a motion to establish that, and this is the makeup.
This is specific to the problem at hand, and assessing our situation that we've been left with and charting what our options are for the...
But, but I would, I will say, I agree with that.
Yeah.
But then moving forward, once we have a system in place, we should have two of us that are responsible for...
That's fine, but I...
The monthly check-in.
Having just created this on the fly, I'd hate for this to become immediately assumed to be a permanent, you know...
No, no, I agree with you, I agree with you, but...
The other, the other thing I was thinking is, you know, we could do a select board meeting over Zoom with one agenda item to talk about the orchid if we need to.
No reason we can't do that, too.
Like, it's low, it's low impact, and, you know, if we, if we have information that we need to discuss, there's no reason that we can't get together for that. Because I, I do, again, think everybody here is super invested in this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, for starters, even before we meet next Monday, you know, for whatever the first update is, before, even before we appoint a committee, we can start gathering in all the names through Anthony, so that we have, here's what we know already, here's all the identified, you know, entities, or talking to all their purported experts, or people who say they, you know, have, you know, a good recommendation for us, start assembling all that, those names, so that we can all get a look at them.
Okay, so we're gonna have a motion to form the Nagog Orchard Working Group, do we even need that? And the composition of it?
It should be ad hoc group, so it emphasizes that it has a expiration date.
Sure, life expectancy.
All right, Nagog Orchard Ad...
Could be replaced by some permanent structure.
And it'll have, it'll have open meetings, right?
Oh, yeah, it'd have to.
Have to, yeah.
I mean, yeah, so it, it, they'd all have to be posted and all the rest of it.
So what do you, so what do you guys want to do about the citizens at large, though?
Put it out there.
An experience in what?
Let's ask for...
How long do you want to add?
I think you just say, you know...
Couple of weeks?
Yeah.
I don't know, we, we might get somebody that just is, like, I'll use Vanessa Strong as an example, she's on, I think, the LPAC and EDC, and she's just a project manager.
Someone just say, just leave it open.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to necessarily nail it down, because we're not gonna get, and I'll like that, we're not gonna get somebody from Littleton who has orchidist experience that has been other than Paul.
Personally, I mean, yeah, all right, I'm...
I have a degree in...
Well, it's...
That's true, well, there you go.
There's one citizen at large.
So that's, that's my orchid next door in my house.
Yeah, uh, great that you wouldn't even aware of that, but, I mean, obviously, I know what you're eliminating, but what you're, and culture background, but as far as, yeah...
Time, it's really, they just need the time commitment.
Time commitment, yeah, I, I'm hoping the citizens at large seats are folks that just, um, aren't specific, like, to some, you know, we're looking for this skillset type thing. I just want to make sure that the community at large has voices at the table, and it shouldn't, shouldn't, they shouldn't have to have any particular expertise.
Okay, perfect.
Well, I mean, it's a group to go out and find the experts, not to be the experts.
That's very good.
Yeah.
That's perfect, so we don't need anything specific, just people who want to be involved.
But I, but I will give some way to someone who does have some expertise.
Oh, yeah, well...
Well, we'll see who we get. Um, okay.
Your load hasn't gotten lighter yet there, Chief.
I just, we kind of think, and I just ask for some help.
You're a father and become an orchidist.
To go back to UMass, they'll hit me up for money if I go back out of the stock and they'll want donations, but...
All right, so we're gonna, do you want me to do a, a motion, Matthew?
Um, so I moved, so do we want to, it's to create the group?
Yeah, the, to...
And then appoint...
Create the Nagog Orchard Ad-Hoc Working Group.
So I move that the select board create the Nagog Orchard Ad-Hoc Working Group with membership consisting of, oh, sorry, Nagog Hill Orchard Ad-Hoc Working Group, with membership consisting of two select board members, one ConsCom member, two AgCom members, and one, and two citizens at large.
Second.
Is that good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Move the second of all those in favor, signifying by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, unanimous.
And so now we're gonna do a motion to appoint...
Do we need to do that right now?
Do we need to?
Oh, I'd like to, I'd like to get off the ground and go.
Or not, I don't care.
Yeah.
This work we can do in the next week, you know, I guess we don't need to formally fill the spots, we can do it anyway.
Yeah, technically, you two are part of the AgCom working group, he and I were kind of the two that were responsible for the motion with the August, so we can just keep operating.
So just...
And then when we do all the appointments, we can appoint them.
Maybe just to formalize, you know, until we appoint the full committee in the interim, since work's already been done, get it all into Anthony's so it can be shared in the group as a whole. I mean, you've been taking copious notes, I see your notebook there, too, you know, whatever, we'll get some names and stuff for you.
Right, right.
And start to need, we need to start collating a database that, available.
Right, and so the other thing, too, is to have Anthony reach out to ConsCom, say you need to appoint us one member.
Right.
AgCom, you need to appoint us two members, and then we're gonna put out something publicly for two citizens at large, to apply to the select board by what date?
Two weeks from today?
We're not meeting that night, though, it's a holiday, right?
What's the next, after the fourth, what's the, the sixth, the...
Eleven, twelve. What's the day after that?
Is there a meeting on the 11th? That is a holiday.
18th, I think, is the next one, right?
Yeah. That's correct.
Yeah, the 18th. Because the 11th is Columbus Day, right?
And you can explain, Anthony, the nuances of what we're talking here, it's a short-term group focus on the.
Do we want to say October 15th, which is the Friday before that meeting, is the deadline for applications?
No, we probably would want to do it that Wednesday, so I can keep the information in the packet.
So, October 13th.
There you go.
All right, perfect.
Good.
Hopefully, that'll be enough time for these committees to have a meeting.
It's already on their radar screen, you know?
Yeah.
And they may even.
Even if they have to do a special one, just to get it done. We've done that, so.
Yeah, especially now towards Zoom, it's so easy to.
Right. All right, so that's good.
We're not going to sit around until then, we're going to, you know.
Still moving.
Yeah.
We're moving out to Thursday.
Okay, cool.
We're going out to Thursday.
Yeah, we're going out to Thursday.
All right, good.
That's the other issue.
Oh, I'm sorry, Anthony.
No, no, that's fine, no, tomorrow, I'll talk to you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for that. So next up, we've got meeting schedule.
I'm satisfied.
You guys okay with?
Good night.
Thank you, thanks for your input. November 8th, November 22nd, December 6th, and December 20th. Everybody okay with those dates?
Yep.
Say, November 8th, what?
November 8th, November 22nd, December 6th, and December 20th, or schedule moving forward.
Yeah, that's fine.
December 6th, and what was the last one, the 20th?
The 20th.
Yeah, that's fine, all those are fine.
Oh, there it's up on the screen.
Okay.
Looks good.
Uh, move that the board vote to schedule regular meetings for November 6th, November 8th, November 22nd, December 6th, and December 20th.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. And we do have some minutes.
Yeah, I actually got a quibble with one of the sentiments on the, the joint meeting with the Board of Health. The, the language in our, our version of the minutes is not inaccurate, but it, there's so much, you know, the raw just recitation of votes and motions didn't, doesn't always include the, the explanation that came along with it. However, somebody had the presence of mind to include the Board of Health minutes from the same meeting, and the language they had actually does just that. And I would just ask that that line from the third paragraph on the second page of the Board of Health minutes, where it's speaking to my own comments anyways, after it mentions that Matthew made a motion, I second it. Glavy said that he believes that the decision of the public health is up to the Board of Health, so will reluctantly support the Board of Health despite his disagreement. All right, I'd rather see that, that be reflected in the minutes, some version of that, so I would ask that the minutes be amended to include that in the, it would be in, for the minutes of the August 30th meeting, the last paragraph before the adjournment, where it just, it just mentions the motion and the.
So instead of just, yes, Paul Glavy, put the, that narrative in there?
Yeah, I would just include the one sentence, actually, from the, from the.
What else?
Board of Health minutes, and put it right after.
Want to just read that sentence, or this way Sue will, Sue will pick it up after this meeting.
Okay. Yeah, and Janet Fitch, I'll make these minutes, but it's from the Board of Health minutes, and it says, Glavy said that he believes the decision of public health is up to the Board of Health, so will reluctantly support the Board of Health despite his disagreement. And I would include that right after, where it says, seconded by Paul Glavy in the last paragraph of the, our own draft minutes. All right, Sue will get that now.
So I move that the select board approve the minutes as amended. Oh, sorry, what's the date?
September 27th.
For September 22nd, as amended.
27th.
No, that's August, August 30th, minutes.
Sorry, I went the wrong one.
Let's do this again.
I let you down the wrong path, sorry, Matthew.
I move that the select board vote to approve the minutes for August 30th as amended.
Second.
Move second by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 And then we also had minutes, what, for the 13th, in the, to, are they in here?
Yeah.
Oh, that was. It says it on the sheet, but where are they? Are they in here? Am I missing them?
No, they were both there.
Oh, yeah.
At least, they were in the, they were in the, in the packet.
Okay, yep, the 13th.
It was a big sentence, like, six pages.
Yep, that's fine. Yeah, okay, just blended together with. So we have a, since we already made that motion, you need a separate motion on those, right?
Yeah, so I need to move that the select board vote to approve the minutes for September 13th. Sorry?
13th.
September 13th.
Second.
Move second by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Move second by Mr. Glavy, all those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, folks. Our next, next meeting is?
October 6th.
It's Tuesday.
The first Monday in October.
It's next Monday, actually, isn't it?
Aren't we, aren't we meeting, like, every Monday?
Oh, yeah.
No, I think, next Monday, and then we're off because of.
We'll figure it out, folks.
Okay. We'll be back.
We are meeting again, how about that?
We're meeting again tomorrow at 6:00 PM at 550 King Street, and then we'll be meeting again next Monday, right, same bad channel.